All right, ladies and gentlemen, I think we are ready to begin our deliberation. So I call this meeting to order. And we will begin with reports from the virtual dais. So why don't we begin with Mr. Palmer?
Yeah, amazingly, I don't really have anything to report this time. So I'll just look forward to the rest of the meeting. My input as necessary.
Thank you. Looking forward to it, Ms. Ross.
So I have a report from the Fontaine Avenue Smart Scale Streetscape Steering Committee, or Steering Committee. Committee. We met on 10/20 and I don't, you know, I can give you a background if you like. But I think the last that the Planning Commission saw this proposal for bike pet improvements on Fontaine was in December 2019. Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of this of this project and noted its compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. In January, the council accepted recommendations. And basically, I think in these past months, they were at 30% development of the plans and now it's at 60% design development. So the conversation, folks seeing this 60% for the first time, I believe. One thing that I noted and was discussed is that the project is scaled back to within the city limits only, meaning it stops short of the county, stops at the county. And therefore, there's, I think, about 40 feet of not bike lane, which, you know, we all noted was but was a bummer. And UVA, Helen Wilson from UVA, you know, also voiced her concerns. I guess I just would pose to the group, do we have any way to to resolve or mitigate this or set aside funds in the future? Or work with the county, I suppose, is what we'd need to do. We talked about a retaining wall.
Can I interrupt you just a minute? We've got a joint meeting with the council, with the Almar that Ms. Creasy and their folks are working on. Maybe something you just want to mention is when we have a joint meeting, I think the joint meeting may be in January. So just keep that in the back of your mind, just speak with them about.
Okay. In December, there's a design public hearing planned, so that obviously might happen before the city county meeting, but noted. Just some other design, you know, elements were discussed, a retaining wall at Mimosa and kind of talked about the aesthetics of that. We talked about some parking being impacted at the Dirty Nellies area. But generally, the impact to parking is not of concern to, it seems like, people in the area. And then finally, the plan does call for increasing overall tree canopy. So positive. They are planning to purchase stormwater credits, offsetting stormwater requirements, which, you know, I wish that were not the case, but that seems to be the restriction in the site.
Yeah, no, I may interrupt you once more. Who is the "they" that are looking to buy the storm?
The engineers are looking at purchasing credits.
The UVA engineers or hotel engineers or?
The engineers on the project engineers, I suppose. The city will ultimately be buying them.
Ms. Creasy, do you understand what that means?
Yeah. I'm hearing that there, I'm just hearing what Liz is hearing here. I don't know. It sounds like Alex may have some additional feedback.
Yeah, the the stormwater credit, the engineer, engineering firm, RK and K. You know, we work with the city in terms of addressing that particular requirement. So that's what she was saying. RK and K is the design engineer, working with the city in terms of the design.
So they're recommended that we purchase credits?
Well, yeah, we can do it as part of the project. The funding, it's in the, in the project. The funding is available, so that can be purchased as part of the project. If they can't meet that requirement on site.
Interesting.
They were originally considering bio retention. That's not working, given the site constraints. And so about looking at more expensive ways. That's my understanding of why the stormwater credits are being pursued. From on that meeting, the, there's a December 20, December, design public hearing. And then it is scheduled to go to city council for design approval early, early next year.
Thanks. Mr. Stoltenberg?
So I think I've only had one meeting in the last month. We had a TJP meeting last Thursday evening. So a bunch of financial reports. The big interesting things are the Regional Housing Partnership is rolling out an affordable housing search tool. So essentially, a sort of Zillow or Craigslist-like website where, you know, rent restricted affordable housing, income restricted affordable housing will be listed. So that will be rolling out in coming months. And they'll be doing a bunch of outreach, both to affordable housing developers to list their sites, their apartments on it, and to potential tenants and users to market it. Also, the rent relief program is continuing apace. They got some more funding for that. So anyone who needs rent relief should go to tjpdc.org and try to sign up there. And there was a mention of a proposal from the executive director about a potential rename for TJPDC. Both the TJ part and the PDC part are up for change. And not much taken last Thursday, but I believe Councillor Payne is following up on that. And the city is going to ask staff to pursue new name options. So those are the big updates in the last month. We would have had a place meeting coming up on Thursday, but I believe it was not noticed. Now that it's a staff designated committee and not a council committee, doesn't technically need to. But, you know, admirably, the city is still planning on noticing those. So that has been delayed until it can properly be noticed. That's my report.
Reverend Eaton?
Good evening, everybody. I do not have a report in the last month. I wasn't able to make the meeting at the Transportation District. So I do not have a report since our last meeting.
Ms. Dow? Ms. Dow, are you there? Tania, there you are. You're muted.
I'm sorry. I was trying to unmute and turn my video off. It's been a day. Good evening, everyone. I have. Tonight, I'll be giving a report from October 28th at 4:00 PM. The Red Street Task Force met. One of the biggest issues that arrived, that arose during the meeting was access and ease of access to downtown from the Red Street neighborhood. Also, it was noted that a large percentage of percentage of the Red Street neighborhood residents are considered frontline workers and that it would be nice to have programs and educations for residents in the area. So trying to see if jobs are approaching the actual residents here to help them create economic sustainability. And to see if we could use some funds from this task force to provide scholarships to residents to get skilled or trade certifications. And Lee also let us know that they had some, not a lot, but they do have some resources for people who live in that, in this neighborhood and want to get certifications or may need childcare to help cover watching their children while they are obtaining those certifications. We also talked about increasing this, the number of speed limit signs. Not necessarily putting in speed bumps or anything, but just having it posted as a visual more often could be an idea to try to calm the traffic. To actually put benches at the bus stops. So I know a couple of the bus stops have been moved in this area, but they do not have benches on them, or they have benches where the old bus stop was. So trying to get the seating matched with the transportation. Once again, speed is in all bold letters. A couple of things that we wanted to take into place before we move forward, and Erin is going to be reporting back to us, is how the Elliott Streetscape Plan, the SIA, the Old Red Street Plan, and the Smart Scale Fifth Street Plan will be able to be tied in with the recommendations of the task force, so that way we're not duplicating efforts. And from public comment, we had issues about the crosswalks on Elliott Street and the importance of continuing the engagement process.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, one last thing. So one thing I took from, actually, the Planning Commission did this for the Cherry Avenue Quarter was I've recommended that the task force walk the neighborhood. So that way, everybody could see exactly what angles they were talking about, how the cars are moving through the neighborhood. So I believe we may have that coming up on Friday. I need to check my email. Thank you.
Good. Thanks. Soliates?
The Housing Advisory Committee met on October 21st. Just sort of a round robin format, everybody talking about the main issues. What struck me was a report that some landlords are potentially discriminating against rental applicants on the basis of income, asking for proof of income that they can afford, that they have three times as much income to afford their rent, which is potentially troubling. The city is investigating it as of 10/21. On the 28th of October.
Say about that? What does the law say about that? Is it legal or not?
I got this from Sina.
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure how things recently changed. But having worked with Section 8 State, having worked with Section 8 vouchers in the past. When I worked with landlords who accepted Section 8 vouchers, the Section 8 voucher counted as income towards that. So when you said you need to have two times the rent or something like that, or three times the rent, depending, that Section 8 voucher counted towards that amount based on the amount that the Section 8 voucher was covering. So if the voucher was covering $600 out of an $800 rent or something, then that would be $600 towards your gross monthly income. I do not know if that's how landlords are doing it now, or if they're just trying to really utilize this to get around this. And I, I also know that credit has not been, from what I understand, credit is still something that people can demand a credit, a good credit check, which regretfully, having again, worked in a field with a lot of people who had Section 8 vouchers, a lot of times their credit was not the best. And we had a lot of landlords who would discriminate that way. And I'm going to call it discrimination because that's what I felt it was.
I'm sorry. Allow. I interrupted you.
No, that was important and helpful. On the 28th of October, there was a meeting of the Barrick Streetscape Steering Committee talking about the aesthetics of retaining walls. Lots of good options, very exciting. A lot of people had strong opinions. Brick ended up being the favorite of the group, much to the dismay based on the feedback that I got from this commission. Thank you all for your contributions. The, there were some changes that I wasn't expecting. There will be less space for bicyclists and pedestrians than standard. They had to get a special request from VDOT to squeeze that tighter. And to get that special allowance, they had to eliminate the nice streetlights that we saw, the vertical poles. Those are gone. And instead, there will be recessed lighting built into the, that wonderful retaining wall. There will be lighting the, the walk and then into the street. That will be the street light, which there was a lot of feelings about.
What about the canopy? And those walls are going to like result in a significant reduction in canopy? How to?
They're still working on that. There's also, they're finding that there are going to be some issues moving utilities, which will wipe out a lot of canopy that they weren't expecting. I asked them if they have looked at burying the utilities, and they said, of course, but it's so expensive. So it is probably not going to be possible with the budget. So some bad news on that.
Mr. Lindra?
Thank you, Chair Mitchell. Over the last month, I attended a Board of Architecture Review Meeting on October 20th. We had three certificates of appropriateness approved. One was withdrawn just prior to the meeting. We did a preliminary discussion of one project on Oakhurst Circle. And we also had a preliminary presentation by the designers of the City County Courts Project, reviewing the kinds of future phasing and the anticipated VAR reviews that are going to be needed. And then lastly, in support of the business activity in the city during the pandemic and the upcoming cold weather, BAR unanimously passed a motion approving outdoor tents in architectural design control districts for as long as the governor's state of emergency is in effect. So we don't have to go through that individually for every tent. I attended also a Tree Commission meeting on October 28th. And the real action and highlighted that meeting was a presentation by Crystal Rittervold, who's the city's Environmental Sustainability and Facilities Development Manager. She presented on the recently completed City Green Print 1.0 Charlottesville Green Infrastructure Guide. It's a, it's a guide on the city's website that was put on just two months ago, being worked on for many years. And it has links to the green asset maps that provide searchable data. Green infrastructure encompasses the natural elements such as trees, rivers, and good soils, the building blocks of healthy communities, and the natural assets they support. As the city develops in the future, constructing buildings, roads, and utilities, the value of Green Print 1.0 is the data it provides on the city's existing natural systems so that they can be preserved, integrated, and even enhanced with the new development. All developers and designers should be familiar with this document and go to the website. Great information. And the city did a fantastic job, and Crystal's department did a wonderful job in getting it together and getting it persevering and getting it on our website. Thank you.
Very cool. So before I make this point in my report, I want to make certain, we've all seen the announcement about the new India's director. That's public, right? Okay, cool. I had the honor of representing us in the, in the process. And the, the folks that were on my team included three developers, one past Planning Commission Chair, and one councillor and me. And we all came to unanimous consent, consensus that Mr. Parag Argwal, it was the right person for Charlottesville. The slate was a great slate. So we weren't, we were picking from, from a great group of people. But Parag was the guy that we unanimously endorsed. And so he'll be on board soon. So that's the one thing that I've been doing the last couple of months. Ms. Creasy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to let folks know, we had a little bit of a technical issue. Mr. Rice was kicked off the system, but he is back online again. And we have some co-hosts on the staff side in case that were to happen again. It does appear that we are not live on Channel 10. We are live on all streaming aspects, but Channel 10 was having some difficulties. They are planning to rebroadcast that. I don't know if Joe has any sort of updates. I'm sure he can provide that to us, but I just wanted to let you all know that why I was kind of back and forth on the phone in the background. We were trying to make sure that, that we were logistically in good shape. So that's, that's one thing for this evening. Also, you all received a notification from Clerk of Council concerning the updates to the FOIA, the conflict of the FOIA, the FOIA, and some other public records documents. We are going to plan to have some time at a future meeting in the near future to go through those with you. Not a page by page. Ms. McGill's very excited about that, I can see.
It would be nice to not have to like sit down and read through the whole thing, so I'd be really grateful.
Well, yeah, so, so as part of you all's role, it's important that you do take a look at those materials. When you went through your orientation, we gave you some very basic background on that. But we feel like it will be helpful to, to provide some overview. So we will be doing that, but that doesn't mean that you can't look at the documents now and, and take a look and make sure that you understand the gist. And then we'll, we'll provide some background on that to help you all out along the way and help ourselves as well. Because it's always good to have reminders of those things. Yes, we've got, you know, a couple of items this evening. We have a full agenda for December. So we will, we'll continue to, to, to have full meetings. We're working with the county on the joint work session with their planning mission. And we have that on the calendar right now for January 26th, the fourth Tuesday. I already had you guys pencil that in. And we've got a meeting with staffs next week to, to spend some time trying to, trying to organize that. The topic will be housing. And of course, we've, we have a lot of housing activities going on in both communities. And we want to, want to frame that in a way that it'll allow both groups to have a good discussion about those activities and find ways that we can work together. So I believe those are the only notations that I have. We are still continuing to function as a department. We have our new director coming. We are in the process of working towards a new building official. Our building official retired in August. We also, an ADA coordinator, we're in a recruitment process for that. We anticipate, we have no guidance on where we'll be over the next few months. So we're continuing on this path. We have a avenue for every application to make it through our system. So any process that we were doing before the pandemic, we are doing though in a, a different way. But we are, we are getting those things done. And as you all can see from our anticipated agendas, we are having a good number of items come forward. So the work continues.
Very good. Thank you. So, Mr. Rice, we are now ready for matters to be presented by the public that are not on the formal agenda. So public, this is your opportunity to chat with the commission about anything that we do that will affect you, that is not on the, the agenda. And the only thing that's on the agenda tonight is the Nassau Street rezoning. So with that, Mr. Rice, are there people in the lobby that would like to speak?
Thank you, Chair. And I'd like to welcome our registered attendees. If anyone would like to address the commission during this time, please click the raise hand icon. Or if you're joining us by phone, press star nine. We'll call on you in the order of hands raised. And once we enable your audio, please unmute your mic. You'll have three minutes for comment.
Mr. Chair, one also notation, the consultants actually asked me about this before, and I should have mentioned, sorry, mentioned it. The commission will want to determine whether they want to have comments from the public following the affordable housing discussion. I see from our attendees, we have a few folks that I assume are interested in that issue, but they, they may have some other thoughts to provide after that session. So that's something for consideration.
If there are no objections from the rest of the commission, I think that would be something we ought to do. Any objections to input? Okay, looks like we're cool with that. Thanks. Mr. Rice, anyone like to speak?
For this portion of public comment, I see no hands raised, Chair.
Okay, and I can't see my clock because I have my glasses on, but how many minutes do we have before six o'clock?
Four minutes.
All right, we're in recess for four minutes.
We can complete the consent agenda.
Oh, you know, Miss Creasy, I always forget that part. Thank you.
No worries.
So minutes, any, any questions about the minutes?
I have one minor correction I noted in the chat.
Yes, Mr. Stoltenberg noted a change to page five to of the minutes, which is 37 of the PDF. And it's the correct spelling of the organization that Ms. Thomas was talking about during the discussion. And so we definitely appreciate being able to get that spelling corrected.
You're lying. Okay.
There's no other corrections. I would make a motion to approve the minutes and the consent agenda with that one modification.
Second.
I can.
All right, all in favor, seek to my raise your hand. Ms. Creasy, we have unanimous consent to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you for reminding me, and you always do. How many minutes? Two minutes recess, and we're back in two minutes.
Just warning you, Missy, your mic's still on.
Thank you.
Chair, just so you know, your mic is still on.
Oh, you're watching me read my names?
I'm just letting you know, the mumbling's coming across. I talk to myself all the time. No, and pretty much everyone knows it. So I'm cool with it, but you know.
Thank you. Glad you give me a heads up because, you know, you never know.
Believe me, yes, I know.
So Madam Vice Mayor, I only see two councillors so far. Am I missing someone?
Everyone was planning on being here.
Okay, we'll chill for a minute. I'll let you know what that means. I love that show. That means.
Oh, you can't hear it, but my, my hand puppet was singing the whole time. It was amazing.
I love this board.
Tenor, bass, I mean, what's the, what's the puppet going here?
Uh, with the high one tenor, I think.
Well, I mean soprano or falsetto.
There we are. That's the one. Thank you.
How's baby?
Wonderful. Sweet. Handful, demanding, but wonderful.
Yeah.
Only she's teething.
Oh.
So dude, dude ain't getting no sleep.
No, 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 none of that. It's fine.
No, and they, and it turned out they've pulled Highland's teething tablets off the market, which were like awesome.
Just because they're poisonous?
No. My kid's alive.
Good enough.
Tara Mitchell, you have three of us. We can get started on the first item, I guess.
Cool. Vice Mayor McGill is counsel in order.
Counsel is in order. Thank you.
Counsel is in order. Why don't we go ahead and begin? And we've got one public hearing item, and that is a rezoning application. The rezoning application is ZM 20 dash 00004. The property is located at 817 Nassau Street. And it is a rezoned application taking us from R1S, which is a residential small lot to R2, which is residential two family. And it's approximately 1.1 acre lot that fronts on Nassau. And I believe Mr. Alfie has, is managing this application.
Yes, Chair. So Matt Alfley, Planner with Neighborhood Development Services, Commission to the Council. Tonight you do, you're holding a public hearing for a rezoning there at 817 Nassau Street from R1S to R2. Justin Schimpf is representing the owner of Management Services, which owns the property. In this request, there is no property or development plan. So they're basically requesting rezoning the build a duplex. And if you'll, and you've probably seen in the report, there's a comparison of the R1S zoning district to the R2. One of the interesting things out of this is you can get a single family attached or a two-family dwelling. The number of units you would get out of this through a rezoning is going to be similar to what you would get in an R1S because of accessory. And there's really not much more on that. I can answer questions. You'll need to hold a public hearing. We've not had any public on this reach out except one citizen reached out in support. But there has not been any emails or phone calls outside of that that I have received. The applicant did hold their community engagement meeting. No one showed up to that. But with that, like I said, I'm here to answer questions. The applicant's here to answer questions.
So open it up to questions for Ms. Delphi. Will the, is the applicant, does the applicant want to present or is he just here to field questions?
Just to feel, there's no presentation from the applicant, but the applicant is here to answer questions.
Open it up for questions to the applicant. Counsel, do you have questions for the applicant or the staff? I.
You has, um, Jeremy. I just wanted to know what kind of community engagement process was what happened for, I mean, during COVID and everything, how was community engagement in enacted?
So we do have a process for that. It involves mailing. Now you can hold a Zoom meeting or on a different platform. But to do a community engagement meeting as we did prior to COVID, now you're required to mail the application or not, excuse me, not the application, the explanation of what you're doing when you're holding the meeting, a self-addressed envelope to mail comments back in case you can't attend the meeting to within all residents, so not property owners, but all residents within 500. And the applicant did do that. It was held. When was that meeting held? July 20th. Or excuse me, on September 23rd, the applicant held the community meeting on Zoom at 6:30. That meeting stayed open till, I believe, yesterday, the 30-day window to receive any comments that would have been mailed back from the package.
And do we know how many, how many citizens live within 500 feet of the property?
I don't have that number in front of me, Justin. Do you remember how many packets you mailed out? I believe it was.
I do not, but I'm sure Kelsey will because she does a lot of the work and all these applications. Kelsey, do you have that number handy?
I'm sorry, I was trying to pull up the city provided spreadsheet. I would call it being several hundred, all the ones that we've mailed out with the city. COVID process have been several hundred. So, but, but I just don't have the number in front of me right now.
I just wanted kind of an approximate. I didn't need an exact number. Thank you.
Sure, of course.
I just wasn't sure if it was five people or a couple of hundred people. That's.
No, it's typically, typically quite a few in the city.
That's all my questions.
Any other questions? Any other questions from counsel? Right.
Question for the applicant?
Yes.
Wonderful. Why? Why though? Steph's, you know, big criticism is that there's not a reason for this. I, I don't see a reason either. Why?
Oh, well, there is one. I mean, you could do the little accessory unit trick on this or somebody has it, then it has to be owner occupied. There's restrictions to size of the unit based on, you know, the primary dwelling unit. So the R2 gets, you know, two full family units on the property instead of one. And that, that's just better, in our opinion. So that's, that's really all justification we need.
Good question. Is the intent to make them to, to subdivide into two single family attached or to build a combined duplex on one parcel, but still two separate?
I think most likely it'll be a combined two-family dwelling.
Thanks.
Any other questions for the applicant or the staff?
I do have a question for staff in relation to the community meeting. Not that one exactly happened this time, but we've seen on other, for the site plan review, community meetings, they're all now posted on the city websites so that the videos can be reviewed. And I really liked that. And I was wondering why this one is only available through the developer. Granted that no one showed up to the meeting, but.
So because it's, it's a dip, the, when you do a community meeting, how it was set up with the rezoning and the special use, it put the onus on the applicant. So this was back in the, especially pre-COVID, they would hold a meeting so that the community was there. And so really before they even kind of started going through the process, they would have this community engagement meeting. So the site plan conference meetings, the meetings you're seeing online, that's the city's responsibility. So when you actually submit a site plan, you're in the process. That's actually the city hosting that meeting.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Thanks.
Anything else? Right with that, Mr. Rice, we're going to open it up to public comment. Are there any people in the lobby that would like to speak?
Anyone like, would like to speak during the public hearing, please click the raise hand icon or press star nine if you're joining us by phone. And no hands raised, Chair.
All right. Any further thoughts or is there a motion? You need.
I have a motion.
Thank you.
I move to recommend approval of this application to rezone the subject property from R1S to R2 on the basis that the proposal would service the interests of the general public and good zoning practice.
Second.
Moving properly second, Ms. Chrissy, would you pull the board?
Sure. Mr. LaHindro.
Aye.
Mr. Sola Yates.
Aye.
Ms. Dow.
Aye.
Mr. Heaton.
Aye.
Mr. Stoltenberg.
Aye.
Ms. Russell.
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell.
Looks like the application is recommended for approval. All right, we are going now to segue into the work session. And that work session will be moderated by Jenny and Latoya. But before I do that, I would ask the council, stick around a couple of minutes after the work session. We would like to have a conversation with you, you guys with counsel. And that conversation will be led by Mr. Stoltenberg regarding what we're going to do with the the potential garage that's right across the street from the Breakfast Center and the City Hall Annex. We'd like to have a just, just chat with you about what we might do with that and just give you some food for thought and maybe get some direction from you and maybe staff on what we do with that garage. We do appreciate that we've deliberated this before when we went through the capital budget discussions about a year ago. But we'd like to just chat a little bit more and we'll keep it brief regarding that. So please, if you don't mind, stick around for 15 minutes or so after that. With that, I yield forward to Jenny and Latoya.
Great. Thank you very much. Thanks everyone for having us. I'll, I'll ask Mr. Rice to pull up the slides. You all saw in your packet, there was a link to the draft affordable housing plan. We do have slides that are sort of a streamlined version to walk us through. We do also have the full plan available if we want to pull up any of that to speak to questions. But first, you know, I want to note, since these slides were not included in the packet, you can go to seavilleplans together.com under documents and materials, under planning commission, you can find these, these slides. Tonight, we'll first provide a brief overview of the materials that are available right now. Really to Seville Plans Together, we are in a community engagement period. So we'll talk a bit about that. And then we'll proceed into the bulk of our conversation, which is focused on the draft affordable housing plan. And with the draft affordable housing plan, we do, we'll be walking through that in pieces and we'll stop at certain points to have opened up for discussion, but obviously, please feel free to stop us if you have points of clarification or discussion in between there. Please go to the next slide. As always, I always want to do a really quick overview of what we're talking about. Seville Plans Together is the name of a process. We're working to update the city's comprehensive plan. And as part of that update to the comprehensive plan, we've drafted the affordable housing plan, which will feed into the comprehensive plan. And so we'll be talking about that today. Once the comprehensive plan revision is complete, we will be revisiting the zoning ordinance to ensure that it reflects these goals and strategies that we're putting into the comprehensive plan as well as any other needed updates. If you want any more background information about the process, you can find that on seavilleplans together.com. On next slide, please. So as I mentioned, right now we are in a public engagement phase. We want everyone in the community to hopefully understand what's going on. So I want to, I want to go over that briefly here. Two things, we have the draft affordable housing plan. It's out for comments. It's on the website. I'll show that link in just a second. That'll be the focus of our discussion. We've also put out draft initial comprehensive plan revisions. That includes guiding principles, which are overarching priorities for the entire comprehensive plan as well as some vision statements with our, which are sort of priorities for each of those topic-specific chapters and transportation, housing, et cetera. So those are all available for review. I want to note, this is the, especially for the comprehensive plan, this is really the first starting point for revisions. We need some, or we want to get some community input on these statements before we move forward into saying, what are the goals beneath these statements and what are the strategies to reach those goals? We want to make sure we have some conversation about that first. All right, if you go to the next slide, I mentioned we've got all of this information on the website. You see here at seavilleplans together.com forward slash virtual dash meeting. So you can see the link here. You also see on the screen an example of what the site looks like on desktop or mobile. There's sort of three important sections here, engagement summary that leads you to a summary of what we heard in May and June from all the community input we did, the survey, et cetera. That input really fed into the draft affordable housing plan and the draft comprehensive plan revision. So it's important that we walk through that so everyone knows what we heard. I also want to note at the bottom of this page, what you're seeing here is the sort of homepage for the virtual meeting. At the bottom of this page, there's a list of all the events and opportunities, including this event, everything that's going on between now and early December. We're asking for comments back by December 2nd and between now and then, there are several opportunities for folks to tune in and learn more. Or just get tuned into the process. So if you go to the next slide, you can see examples of everything we're up to. As with our first round of engagement from May and June, we have a series of events coming up to both share information and also gather input. We have four webinars, two for the draft affordable housing plan and two for the draft's comprehensive plan revisions, recognizing that it would be a lot to have all of that in one session. So the dates are, you can see there, the housing plan, first webinar is tomorrow evening. We also added at this phase some drop-in office hours, which will be a time for people to stop by in the virtual environment or on the phone and just ask some questions and give their comments. And that's building on a concept we originally envisioned in a non-COVID universe to have conversations at cafes and whatnot in neighborhoods. And so not wanting to gather everyone together in person, we're suggesting this as an alternative. And so there is a toll-free number people can use to call in. So we're hoping we, we know, we look forward to those discussions there. There's also a survey. Again, it's certainly not the only way people can give their input, but sometimes that's what people prefer. And so there is a survey available. As noted on the website, people can also send comments via our comment form or directly to our email address, which is engage@seavilleplans together.com. Or you can also use the toll-free phone line, which is shown here. You can call in and listen to a brief message in English or Spanish and leave your comments. Lastly, it's not shown on here, but we have been distributing flyers with all this information and we'll continue to do so. It has, you know, things like the phone number to call in for these events or how to register. We've also been looking for opportunities for some sort of COVID-safe pop-up events. We know, we do want to be out in the community. We know not everyone is going to go to a website and look at this. And so for example, Latoya and I were, you know, around Charlottesville this weekend. We, we had a couple of different events stopping and interacting with folks. And so we're going to continue to look for opportunities there. And I'm happy to know we do have a couple of peer engagers on board and we're working with them. These are folks from the community who are really passionate about, you know, community engagement and making sure people can be involved. And so we've started to work with them and we look forward to that partnership. If you go to the next slide, this is my last slide. I just want to note, we have also scheduled a steering committee meeting. It's a busy month in many ways, steering committee meeting on November 23rd, 4:00 to 5:30. We have posted the link to register as you can see right on that page here. So just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. But with that, I will go ahead and pass it off to Sarah Kirk and Philip Cash with HRNA Advisors. They'll be walking through the draft affordable housing plan for discussion. And as you mentioned, Latoya and I are here to make sure we're moving through the, the entire thing. So we will have some time for discussion, but we will try to keep us moving as well. So thank you again for having us. If you go to the next slide, we can get started. Thank you.
Jenny, thank you for the introduction and I'm glad to hear that you're going to be poking us to keep moving when we, if we get bogged down at any point. That's always a helpful and necessary. So we're going to be talking through our draft plan with you all today. This is the first time we're talking in a public venue about the draft plans. We're, we're pretty excited about this. A lot of work went into putting this draft together. It reflects feedback from countless parties within Charlottesville. We think we've done a good job of reconciling those different viewpoints, but also recognize it's a draft. And as you put things in writing, you get more feedback and you have more conversations. So we're already getting some of that written feedback and going to try to address some of that that's coming in the past few days during our presentation, but expect to get a lot more and looking forward to the conversation here to refine and improve. We also acknowledge that it's a relatively long document, not as long as some of the housing plans we do, but it's a relatively long, dense document. And so we're going to try to. but it's a relatively long, dense document, and so we're going to try to break it into pieces, but have set up, as Jenny started to talk about, a lot of additional time for conversations and are going to be available for one-on-one conversations as appropriate, if there are particular topics folks need and want to get into. With that, let me hand it over to Sarah Kirk, the project manager, and she'll start moves through.
Great, and we can go into the next slide, I think. So, as Jenny has said and as Philip has said, the Affordable Housing Plan, we've put out a draft earlier this month. It's been a pretty, an effort ongoing for the last 11 months under the umbrella of Seville Plans Together. Some of the work that we've done already has included building on the past housing needs assessment to really understand the work that's already been done in Charlottesville, engaging with the steering committee as well as other local groups to understand priority issues around housing and as well as schools, participating in the public engagement for Seville Plans Together, and then really evaluating the tools that are part of the recommendations for their feasibility and potential impacts in Charlottesville, next slide. As of right now, we're in the midst of a one-month public review and comment period, so as Philip said, we're welcoming comments. We've already gotten some input in writing from groups in Charlottesville, but both through the engagement work that Jenny outlined and through written comments that can be provided by email or through the website, we are incorporating feedback through December 2nd. Based on that feedback, we'll be revising the plan and submitting it for endorsement in early 2021. Next slide. Our goal for today is to-
I'm sorry, how are you all tracking the recommendations that come in and whether you all implement them in the plan? Will we know that?
So, how we're planning to approach this has been similar to us tradition. This is not a HUD regulated plan, but we're going to, we are intent was to follow general HUD rules. So, we'll actually take all the comments and all the comments will be attached as an appendix to the document so that it's transparent with what we responded to. Does that answer the question clearly?
Yeah, thank you.
Does that feel like, does that feel like an appropriate approach? We have, this isn't federally regulated, so we have a great deal of flexibility on how we approach it. But we want to make sure that the comments are reflected, otherwise it undermines people's willingness to give us comments.
No, I think that, I think we should just know where the comments came from and how they've been incorporated.
Yeah, absolutely. As I was saying, our goal for today is to provide an overview of the plan as well as the key initiatives and ideas that are within the plan. And we're going to go through that and sort of hold discussion. And then what we'd like to do is talk through the recommendations, and at that point, we're going to go through section by section, the recommendations, and allow for discussion as needed. And then talk a little bit about next steps, next slide. Great, next slide. So, a lot of people have seen this before. We've shown this to a lot of people, this has been sort of how we've been talking about the core ideas of the plan since earlier over the summer, I believe, or late spring. But the recommendations in the plan are informed by three guiding principles. So these aren't really goals, but they're, they're lenses and types of consideration that we've brought into each of the recommendations, that you can see in the plan, that we've thought about how each recommendation aligns with these guiding principles. So, that's, those are racial equity, so we want to make sure that we're making recommendations about how, not only how these tools or recommendations can be implemented, but how they can be implemented in a way that is intentional about overcoming historic inequities, regional collaboration, so identifying areas where we're making recommendations for the city, but where the city also has an opportunity to partner within the region to, to advance its goals more broadly, and a comprehensive approach, so making sure that we're thinking about a broad variety of types of tools and types of housing options that the city can and should be supporting. Next slide. There are five key sections, Philip, I don't know if you want to talk about this one.
Keep going, you're doing great.
So, there's five chapters of the plan. The first two are about implementation needs and the other three are about tools. That's a little bit backwards from how we would usually do it, but what we found is that Charlottesville has already considered and has in place a lot of the tools that we were talking about, and so whereas we've made recommendations about how Charlottesville could approach, tweak, design, and approach to implement those various tools, where we found the real need for focus was on the how, how those tools get implemented. And that's specifically around funding and governance, so we've put those two up front. Next slide. And really, building on that, there are like 22-something tools recommended within the plan. So there's a lot of recommendations, we've really captured a lot of the different ideas that people have been talking about in Charlottesville and thought about how to move them forward in alignment with those guiding principles. But the really, the core big ideas of the plan are these three major initiatives. And we think that together, those three initiatives form a really strong commitment to equitable and affordable housing in Charlottesville. So those are funding, dedicating $10 million annually to affordable housing, and we'll talk a bit more about that in the next section. Governance, and when we say that, what we mean is really building inclusive governance throughout Charlottesville's affordable housing infrastructure. That's the city, that's the public organizations that advise on the use of public funds and priorities. And that's also the leadership of nonprofit partners. And we think that those two, that governance that is inclusive across all of those different groups is really crucial to ensure that Charlottesville's affordable housing work is meeting that racial equity goal and including diverse voices. So we'll talk a bit about, more about that as well. And the third one is adopting progressive and inclusionary zoning reforms. We know that's something that the city's already spent a lot of time talking about, and it's going to be done in part through the rest of the Seville Plans Together effort. But wanted to call out that those three things together are really, would be a major, a major commitment above and beyond what a lot of cities in the country are doing to advance affordable housing.
So, quick question about the funding piece. How typical is it that we actually articulate a number related to funding in a comprehensive plan?
In a comprehensive plan, I think it's pretty unusual. For an affordable housing plan, it's much more common. But even in an affordable housing plan, you don't always do it. So for an affordable housing plan, you might talk about a particular bond, so there's a bond issuance, Raleigh, North Carolina, bond issuance for $80 million. You might plan and talk about how you're going to spend the bond issuance. Really, we're talking about here is more of a plan that goes with your housing trust fund. It's not uncommon for a housing plan to do this, but not 100, about 50/50 on your housing plans do this. Comprehensive plans, I think this unusual, the approach Charles was taking here with a comprehensive plan that also has a housing plan component to it, so I think that's part of why this is somewhat an unusual circumstance.
Yeah, as we move forward, you may just want to kind of coach us as to how we blend this into the comp plan, because the planning commission is like focused on getting the comp plan out, so. We'll need some guidance as to how we marry these things.
And when I get out of my depth, Jenny's going to save me, but that, that sounds like a very, like, if we can't implement, then we didn't succeed, so that sounds a fair, fair request.
Yeah, I'll be happy to talk about that more as we go.
Thanks, thanks.
I think we can go to the next slide. As we've said, there's a lot of recommendations and a lot of detail in the full draft plan, which is now available, and we encourage everybody to take some time to look through it and provide us comments. But for each housing tool, we talk about both how the tool is used currently or how it relates to needs that have previously been identified in Charlottesville. We provide greater detail about recommended changes or approaches to implementing the recommendation. We talk about the potential impacts of implementing the recommended changes. For each tool, we provide some considerations, as I said earlier, to ensure that they align with the guiding principles. And we talk about the implementation needs, including potential timeframe for implementation and the lead and partners who will be able to help advance that. The final program design and annual budget priorities will be set by the city in coordination with both the hack and a new committee that we're recommending be formed to govern the cap funds. But, so those particular implementation needs may change based on the priorities that those bodies set. But we've tried to provide our best understanding of where the priorities might be and how, how the city should go about making those changes. Next slide. All right. Yeah, you can go ahead.
So I just, I guess, can I go back a slide? Sorry. That's an overview of really what we're going through here, so we're going to go through each of these five chapters. We're going to talk about these at a higher level. Before we start to get into, the first one we're really going to get into is going to be about funding. Is there any, any high-level questions or comments? I, I heard the comment about how this connects to the comp plan, and I think that's something we can keep coming back to. And I hear the comment about making sure we're showing all public comment and full transparency there. Or any, any other high-level comments before we actually get a little farther into the weeds?
Could you explain how that funding level was arrived at?
Perfectly set for the next slides, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, let's go. So, implementation needs, so. At the highest level, what we're proposing, what we propose in here is dedicating $10 million over the next 10 years. And when we look at the programs and the level of impact we're talking about, we think that gets you to around 4,000 households benefited. Now, not necessarily 4,000 units built, but around 4,000 households benefit. We, we made this commitment for a couple of reasons, and structured this way for a couple of reasons. One, there is significant need in Charlottesville for affordable housing. I think there's, you know, you have the previous study on the level of need, I think that makes a pretty compelling case. Everything in our analysis is supportive of that case. And there's a need for consistent funding, both so that we're addressing, this is a challenge that's with us for a long term, so that we need ongoing funding to address it, and you need funding so that you can build out the capacity in your partners and capacity in your local government to actually execute it. So we did not recommend a bond approach, where you go once with a large amount of capital, but actually recommended an ongoing funding approach. Then we made recommendations about the level of, about the level of funding. And we've really tried to reflect these both on the priorities we heard from the community and where we heard the housing gap at. So, we made a recommendation that 40% of the funding go to extremely low housing, low-income households, households under 30% of area median income, I think around $22,000 a year. 40% of funding go to households at 60% of area median income, I think around $45,000 a year. And 20% be able to serve our households up to 82,000, 80, 80% of AMI, or around $60,000 a year. Sorry, it's too many percentages and AMIs and got tripping myself up there. But generally, we made real recommendations on the targeting. And then we made some recommendations about transparency, really about publishing the metrics that are going to be used to measure the impacts and the level of the costs and the what's being produced with this funding. And making sure that that's transparent and clear, and frankly, can be disaggregated based on neighborhood and characteristics of who benefits, so race and income levels.
So, you're, you're going to go into exactly where this money's going to go, right? I mean, what portion of this is going to go into helping with down baby hands, rental support, mortgage offsets, you going to go into that?
No, we are not, we are not, we did not recommend a detailed budget by program. We recommended an allocation by funding level, and then we recommended a set of programs. And then we recommend a governance structure that, that gets the alloc, gets control, the allocation, or make, not control, make recommendations about the allocation of that. So that the allocations of funding are really done on an annual basis. So.
Any assessment done on a available land within the city limits? And how many of these 4,000 household could be created within the city without looking at those partnership opportunities?
Yes, let me answer that question in a couple of, so the 4,000 households is not necessarily 4,000 new units of housing in, in its entirety, so I want to be clear on that, but let's, let's just say it was, for the sake of the conversation we're forward. Then we looked at for other programs, what's the ability of different programs to absorb, like actually implement and do them? So we're talking about the public housing. Well, you know, redevelopment, the public housing units would actually potentially be included in those 4,000 units. Those are existing sites where there's already land, so we looked, when we looked at that program, we looked at that. We looked at, you know, again, I'll talk about multifamily, low-income housing tax credit development. We looked at some of the development you had, some of the parcels that are available in the community, and what's the potential to absorb it, and this is part of where we talk a lot about regionality and what's the ability to do some of this development in the urban ring. We don't make that a requirement, but we do certainly make that a recommendation about there's ability to do it. So, yes, we have looked at the ability of the different programs to absorb and actually be feasible to execute it. I can't, you know, it would be a stretch for us, me, to say that we've identified sites for this, all of this development, because we certainly have not gone to that level of granularity. Does, did I answer your question or did I talk around it? I tended to answer it, but I want to make sure I actually did.
No, it was helpful, thank you.
I have a question on the bucket sizes. I'm, I have sort of the housing needs assessment in my head always. And the bucket sizes there, just looking at rental homes are different, partly because they're looking at different AMI slices. Is, I'm worried about what the blanket is covering and who isn't being covered. Does this still cover everyone under 30% AMI, or are they cold?
What you say covers everyone under AMI, 30% AMI.
Who needs it?
I'm not sure I under- So every house, would this build an affordable housing unit for every household under 30% AMI?
Identified in the housing needs assessment.
No, it would not.
But that 40% of funding is available for households at 30% and below.
Even dedicating 100% of this funding would not cover everyone under 30% AMI.
So, I guess, the question, forgive me if you're going to answer this in a later slide, is where did you guys come up with, you know, this 40%, 40%, 20% framework? Because, you know, looking at the rental affordability challenges on page 31 of the draft, of the extremely cost burdened households, you know, the majority of them are certainly below 50% AMI. And by the time you get into the 60, 80, we've got essentially no or very few households that are extremely cost burdened. And I guess the question is, why not specifically target families in the most need?
So I think we would argue we are targeting the families in those need, there's need at 80% AMI and below. 80%, so it's not just rental housing we're trying to address here, we're also trying to address access to homeownership. And so it's really a consideration of both homeownership and rental that led us to this distribution. Can we go to, does that answer the question? I mean, I think we'll get feedback that pushes for a distribution, different distribution, and a different distribution can be done. We, we think that you want to have a mix of incomes, and, you know, there is housing, there is housing need up to 80% AMI. We think particularly, your homeownership should go from 80% and below, so. You know, 50% AMI can still be part of your homeownership program, it's not, when I say that, I know we got a comment that that's implying that it shouldn't be, and I want to be really clear that we are, we really mean the below comment. But that's part of what we're looking at, is trying to address some of the homeownership and access to wealth building issues and affordability challenges in Charlottesville as well. And dedicating funding only to extremely low-income rental doesn't give you room to address that public policy goal as well. Now, there might be a decision that that's not a public policy goal Charlottesville wants to address. But we got, you know, and that's something we'll talk about a little bit more in the governance section, we got a lot of feedback and pushback, make sure that that was something that is included, and we think that is a good policy to include it. Next slide.
Sorry, I've got one more on this. In thinking about the different bucket sizes, it may be helpful to understand sort of the racial equity implications of each income bucket. That might help us understand.
Gotcha, so really just to lay out the racial mix for different income bands?
Yes.
And I've got one more question on a different tack on this slide. So, $10 million as a number could mean a lot of different things in terms of how that figures out in the budget. And I'm just a spectator in how council does budget stuff, but, you know, it seems like there's very different constraints on cash-funded expenditures versus bond-able expenditures. Is there a prediction or a designation of how much would go to which? You know, either in the context of city funding constraints or in the context of needs? Or is the idea that, you know, however you come up with it, whatever government structure is in place, we'll figure out what that mix is?
So I think that the recommendation here is that the funding is- So I think that the recommendation here is that the fu, the funding is flexible enough that it can move across regardless of. Program is re- recommended. So if it's, whether it goes into a physical asset or actually goes into rental assistance, you know, non-physical asset. What we're recommending is the flexibility of the funding to do it. Now, which pots the city actually finally ends up to draw from? We're not saying it should be from one particular pot versus another, so it should have the flexibility to do, to serve regardless.
Uh, so let me challenge you on that then. Is it, is it ten million dollars in cash that the city is allocating per year? Um, so for example, if uh, you know, next fiscal year, uh, the city dropped uh ten million dollars on uh, you know, some project that was bondable. Um, really, we're only spending half a million dollars over twenty years plus some interest. Um, it ends up being six hundred and sixty thousand or so per year. Uh, does that count as meeting the ten million dollars for this year?
Yes.
Okay.
Next slide. So. When we started coming to the right, like, it came with a recommendation of ten million dollars. We really put a focus on consistency and looking at what Charlottesville has been doing and the scale of needs. We're trying to balance. Really two different sides here. The first side is. What has Charlotte been doing? What, what can we see in Charlottesville's budget? What potentially, what appears to be sustainable? What's, how does it Charles will compare to peer organizations? What's the ability to actually absorb? That's one side. Another is what's the ability to actually absorb the capital with the capacity and how much money has been being deployed in the market? And then the scale of need and the level of challenge we have to hear and everyone that needs to be served. What we came out with really was a recommendation of, of ten million dollars. The last three years Charlottesville has been putting more money towards affordable housing, which is amazing and great. We're recommending, that's averages around eight million. We're recommending really a slight increase in that level and a commitment to sustaining it going forward. So we're recommending nine million dollars that would go out directly into programs. And a million dollars or ten percent of that total fund to be set aside for administrative expenses. We've got, we've already gotten comments of feedback. I think there's a very fair point or comment can be raised about whether. The administrative costs should sit i- inside the ten million dollars or so on outside. I think that there's. We, we included in here, we've gotten feedback that some folks don't think we should, and I think that's a fair comment. But we do think it's really important to invest in the administrative side of this. Charlottesville is really taking on a lot of affordable housing programs, much, much closer to a larger city. And has to scale up both the capacity of its local government apparatus, as well as investing in the capacity. And training of the nonprofit partners who are delivering, so this administrative money is intended primarily. For local government capacity to actually execute and execute efficiently, but also for some capacity building to recipients of the funding. Make sure, you know, board trainings, things along those lines.
So the, the nine million dollars is a capital commitment. And the one million dollars is a um, is a operational commitment. Yes. It's operation, if we're talking capital budget, operational budget.
I don't want to be thinking the nine million dollars would necessarily qualify for capital because some of it won't go into physical improvement. Some of it might be rental assistance.
Um. It also includes tax relief.
And tax relief.
Actually, uh, I'm just wondering practically as we think about this, um, how does it work from a budgeting perspective since council cannot uh. Commit another council to expenditures?
So the, the plan is a commitment, but it is not meaning it can't be changed in the future, like a future council could decide to not follow this. That this does not. And that's part of why we're looking at.
So this is, this is more an aspirational um. Um, approach.
It's putting a specific, it's, it's a specific commitment made to do, to doing something. Somebody else could run on, run on a platform to do not do this. The way. You know, it's a democratic society, so people can still make, they can change what the government's doing. But as long as they, as long as community support remains for it, usually these things stay. But it is, is a challenge all housing trust funds work on. I think. Um. Yes, we've seen housing trust funds get hollowed out over time.
And so um, if the administrative funding is paying for staff capacity uh plus uh, you know, trainings, that sort of thing for nonprofits. Is there additional administrative overhead within the, the nine million purple section uh in, you know, when you give a grant to a private organization? Their own internal administrative cost?
Generally, it's set up, yes, that there, there could be administered, but usually for these programs, you're not covering. You're covering a set delivery fee with it. So it's usually built into. Like, so like, I think, not being precise, so let me give you a good example. So like, let's say you're doing the down payment assistance program. You'd have a cost that you're doing for every, a cost to administer the down payment. So every grant you made, you build in some administrative cost, that would be part of it. That is intended to be in there, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So Michael, you were, you were about to make a point. What, what was your point?
Oh, just that um, in terms of. Dedicating it um across councils. I know one of the difficulties, I can't remember if it's state law or the state constitution, but. Councils just legally can't bind future councils to expenditures. So that's just one of the challenges there, which is. A real risk is just how do you create mechanisms to ensure that any funding level is maintained and. We just have some legal restrictions there at the state level.
But I think if we build this culture and the community who's voting for councils. Understand this commitment and no matter who they vote for, it should, this should remain a commitment. And so we just have to figure out how to make sure this is a community level conversation. And not simply based on the individuals who are in positions right now.
And that, hopefully, we can speak to that some on the governance side. We certainly. Sustaining the commitment is one of the keys to success on any of these issues and frankly. Can lead to increases in these, like, it can, it can also go the other way. I mean, I live in DC where we started at thirty million and we're at a hundred and thirty million now. Or I think we're a hundred million, thirty million last cycle. I'm not sure what we are. We're a much bigger city and we get, and then we don't send any money to Richmond. We get to keep all the money here, so it makes it easier to do that kind of stuff. Let me, can we go on to? I'll go on to the next slide, but recognize that to come back to this. We've gotten a little bit, we've talked about this income targeting. I heard the feedback on, I heard a couple of different pieces of feedback. One. Are we missing the point about serving extremely low income rental households and should be going deeper? Two, just how does this line up actually with our racial priorities by income band? And then. I think those are the main two pieces of feedback I heard, and if I'm, this is recorded, so if I miss something, I'll come back to it. Um, the other piece in the income targeting is really this community representation piece, which is. We're looking for community representation in the non, in, in anyone who receives funding from. For this program. So let's say it's a program administrator. That, you know, what is their representation on their board or amongst their staff? And when we say community representation, we mean both racial representation, but also, and we lay this out in more detail in the plan. How are the households who are beneficiaries and participating in the programs involved in the decision-making process? For how these programs are designed and operated and implemented. And we, you know, that's not been. The approach historically in affordable housing, but if you are, you know, as we look at best practices around the country and really emerging best practices. Folks are trying to reconcile with their goals and priorities and how this has been done historically. That is, um, that is something we think is a really important recommendation. And I wanted to draw the nuance there because I don't want to conflate race and beneficiary. We're making two separate but related recommendations. There are one about racial diversity and reflecting Charlottesville as a whole, and the other about. Beneficiaries and participants in the housing programs being included in the decision-making process.
Missy, when you took over as the host, we lost the slide presentation.
I'll, I'll, I'll paint a picture with words. It'll be great. So it's not, this, this actually point isn't on the slide. Um, but it is in the report, it's just the slide got crowded. I also make a recommendation about pushing for maximum levels of affordability. So on the rental side, that's easy, you know, that's a clear point. Ninety, we're talking about ninety nine years. Um, on homeownership, we're talking about repayment of funds. Um, as opposed to turning things into grants and we've, that's always what the right balance on homeownership is always a sticky conversation. Um, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in specific programs. Um, but we are pushing for maximum affordability. We think generally you are in a good place to make, make that move. Good, next slide.
Question on, on the ninety nine years. Uh, we haven't done that because it's been cost prohibitive up to now. Um. Is it cost effective? Can we do it?
So I don't want to undermine or challenge anything that's happened previously because I didn't do the analysis on the deals. But usually it's extremely cost effective because the time value of money, so. When we're not doing work for local governments like yourself, we do work for developers. The cost of affordability thirty years from now is very, very low, almost zero for me as a developer. Because it's, that's not how my financial model works. So usually it's the best possible investment a local government can make. Um. There are exceptions to that, and sometimes it's a little more complicated and there's reasons you don't want to mess up financing, but. You can make, like, there are plenty of places in the country that do fifty years and plenty of places that do ninety nine and has no negative impact on their pricing. And we, we say that pretty consistently, both when we work for the developers and for the city, the local governments, like. Local developers should actually be willing to give you longer affordability in exchange for other support pretty easily. Um, it's actually a pretty good deal for everybody financially.
And we push friendship with PHA.
I'm sorry, I spoke over you. I did not mean to. What'd you say?
I said that we push that with PHA to expand um there and um we'll see how it works because it's a new. The friendship court development.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I mean, I would, yeah, I know not to get into, well, we're going to talk about public housing more, but talk about some now, like, that is. I think one of the core challenges is public housing redevelopment. Our country has gone in a direction to bringing private financing into public housing. Um, which on one side is great because it brings in additional funding. On the other side is potentially privatizing your public housing and could be the worst thing ever. So it could be a Trojan horse. Um, and so. Making sure you have permanent affordability and frankly, really understanding the agreement, development agreement you're entering into and the governance structure of that development agreement. Is really um important. I don't believe anybody who you're working with is likely to be this type, but there are a number of. Affordable housing groups out there that structure these transactions so that they intentionally go into bankruptcy so that they can break the affordability restrictions. That is not a myth, that is a real thing. Um. Um, yeah, Betsy DeVos's family actually is a major investor in those funds, ironically enough. And we've run into them a lot in our work in Michigan and North, North Carolina. So I haven't seen them in Virginia, but I'm sure they're here.
Yeah, so just as a point of fact, uh, friendship court is project-based rental assistance. It's not under the housing authority, but uh Mayor Walker, how did that um end up with? PHA or are those discussions still ongoing?
You mean the ninety nine years? That's, I was just talking about it's an affordability period.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking.
Uh, yeah, no, we um. You know, I'm here and learning um through this process, but when we were working um. With Keith Woodard in the development downtown, that is the terms that they put on the parking garage. So I thought, hey, let me explore this a little bit more. And ask for them to include it there. Yeah, so that's where I learned that that is what is common. And so I have been asking for it since then.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Can we go to the next, next slide? So I think this is, so that's actually, we're transitioning over from govern, into governance now. I apologize. I think I accidentally deleted the transition slide. So. I hear the comments on funding. We're going to get into the governance now. This. Um, no, 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 sorry, previous, previous slides are about to around uh twenty, uh slide twenty. I'll stop mumbling and being confusing. My apologies. So on, on the governance side. This actually gets into a comment, a little bit of the conversation we started to go further is like. We're trying to give you the best plan possible and hear all the different needs and try to give you recommendations on it. But the needs and priorities of community are dynamic and there's, you know, you all have already asked frankly, very good and weedy questions about exactly how some of this stuff gets implemented. Mr. Solis, there's questions about exactly how are applying the administrative costs are really important. Questions when it comes down to actually making the units and making sure we get four thousand and not three thousand units. Um. And so we wanted to make sure that we are putting just as much efforts into the governance structures. We also recognize the working in Charlottesville where you have a. Preponderance of governance structures compared to some of the other communities we work in and that we want to make sure that those are working. We also frankly, as we saw our work, saw real differences in what the priorities were. For housing and want to make sure the governance structures are set up to have those conversations. And I actually, I, I mentioned homeownership earlier. And I'm flagging again because it was the clearest difference that line, happened to line up along racial lines, but there are other cleavage points. And that's on, you know, when you talk to black respondents, Latinx respondents, homeownership ranked as a very high priority. But when we talked, we got respondents on the white and Asian side, you know, it was closer to fifty fifty. Not that it wasn't a priority, but it was closer to fifty fifty. And. I can speculate on why that is. I think that probably that has to do with different, frankly, lived experiences. Um. But we wanted to take ourselves out of a role of trying to arbitrate that. And more build a governance structure to try to have it because planners have a long history of thinking we know and writing a plan and we're trying to. You know, we've read our own history and it's not great on this front. Um, so the key actions on the governance at the highest level are. Making sure there's an onboarding process and significant training. Affordable housing is a complicated topic that we pepper with technical speaking acronyms to make it even more opaque and complicated. Um, so that you'll hire us as a consultant, but you know, there's training on that front. We think it's really important. Um. We also just think that there's a cost for it to administer this, and we want to make sure that that's supporting the governance. And we want to make sure that this is actually all set up to monitor success. And when we say monitor success on the governance, it's really. Making sure that we can see. We can see the progress on diverse particip, participation. We actually see like, is there actually participation in the governance and decision-making process? And we can see that, and on the outcome and production, can we disaggregate? Like, telling you that a hundred units were built is one thing, telling you where those units were built within the city and who benefited from them. Is it just an important part of the conversation and something the housing industry tends to be, we tend to say a hundred units and stop. There. Um, and that's not really, that's not really what you asked us for a plan on and not really what you're doing. So we're trying to set this up to support that. Next slide. So Sarah, do you want to run through these? I know I've run over into your slides, so I won't stop talking so much.
So there are four key areas of recommendations that we're making around governance. Um, the first two are sort of external bodies. To the city of the hack and what we're recommending a new um affordable housing fund committee. And then the second two are more related to the city's own capacity and its processes. Uh, next slide. The key recommendations that we're making for the hack are to refocus the hack around providing city council with recommendations. About housing policy priorities and again to separate the budget piece uh from the work that they're doing. So it might be. Making recommendations about a potential zoning change or, you know, we know that there's new state legislation. Um, enabling the city to adopt inclusionary zoning. Uh, it might be about saying that the city needs to be doing more around homeownership. Uh, or investigating, you know, uh, land bank or other tools that have come up in conversation. Um, so that's, that's a key, um, a key piece of the sort of refocused hack. And that's pretty well in line with work that they're already doing. Um, but in addition, making sure that they can champion and advance the implementation of the affordable housing plan. So understanding where those priorities are uh and making recommendations about um. When and how to adopt some of the recommended tools that are outlined in the plan.
I have a question on this.
Yeah.
Um, it is hard for the hack and the planning commission to stay in line. I spend a lot of time trying to do that. Um, is that, how will that work in this plan?
I, I honestly, I think we've made things more complicated and we, like, we, we made a recommendation that we would never normally do, which is another governing body. Um, and. We made this with great hesitance, but we'll, but we, and we're talking about why we made it here a little bit here. I think. Part of that is about, and we don't address that well on the membership side, and I think it's a good, I'm going to take it as a point of feedback, whether you intended it that way or not. Which is maybe there needs to be cross seating between the planning commission and the hack so that there's just more of a direct connection. That may happen informally, but I think it's a good thing to call out. We do, we were thinking this is a, like, there is some overlap and interest there, and so part of that's through conversation. Um. So I, I don't have a perfect answer to that. So I don't have a perfect answer to that, it's mainly some cross seating and some conversation. We're open to, open to feedback and pushback and better thoughts than that, than we have on that.
Yeah, I think on the, on the next one that we're going to talk about, we've spent a lot of time thinking about how to bring. The city into alignment with, or city staff into alignment with housing advocates on budget priorities because that was an area that we. Had seen and heard about some tensions, so maybe that's something that we need to be talking about on the hack side as well. One of the key reasons that we are. Advocating for a second body is to avoid and reduce opportunities for conflicts of interest between the hack. So that's by separating that funding recommendation piece. Hope that we can continue to engage affordable housing providers, real estate professionals, et cetera. On housing priorities, but separating that conflict of interest piece.
And this is as much about a perception as like, the hack has been pretty clear and. Taken seriously the idea of avoiding conflict of interest, but certainly something we heard consistently, if nothing else, there's a perception there. Also, we see this like, the budget piece can swallow the entire hack. And we don't think the budgeting process should, should swallow that. We think that's an important policy, but part of our goal on comprehensive is. For you to be working on housing goal issues and solutions on the tenants' rights and land use side as well. So hack still gets connection to the programmatic and funding side by recommending like pushing priorities like homeownership and the tools. But the budgeting conversation, the weedier conversation about budgeting and frankly, the commerce, again, I'm going to come back to the point about how administrative costs are. Handled, gets handled in a separate conversation. In some ways, it's not that different from what the hack. Had moved towards with a subcommittee on this topic, but we think full separation is actually useful here. But acknowledge we're recommending another body, which is something we don't normally do. We should go, we should go to the next slide. Just to get the.
So the recommended CAF committee, as we're calling it. Would be really charged with providing city council with recommendations about the budget and use of CAF funds. As well as making recommendations on scoring and selection criteria for recipients of those funds. We're recommending a structure that provides equal weight to providers and advocates for affordable housing. Housing residents, affordable housing residents or beneficiaries and city staff. Again, the goal there is to bring. Into alignment, people who are benefiting from the city funds, people who are using city funds and the city staff who are administering city funds.
I would just say, I mean, I think given the size of our, our city and the number of providers, that it could be a challenge. To have that without people having a conflict, I mean, not one year have a conflict, but to have a conflict, not have a conflict over multiple years, if you want to have continuity in this committee is just a caution for me.
So we, we think that that's a whole challenge. And we, we wrote a draft conflict of interest policy. Because we thought it was such a challenge, it's included in the plan. That allows for. Really makes two tiers of conflict. So one, one role you're going to be taking on here is allocating funding across the different programs. And basically it lets you vote on the allocation of funding and cost programs, just not the program you. Are participating in, so you could participate, but if you were running, you worked in a nonprofit that does down payment assistance. You wouldn't be able to vote on the allocation to that program and you wouldn't be able to participate in the conversation. On scoring criteria or selection for anybody in that space, but you could participate in the rest of the conversation. We, we definitely acknowledge like this challenge of like having experts and having the folks who are invested in this. Involved without having conflict or perception of conflict. The policy we, we, the draft is based on some work we've done in Pittsburgh and. You know, we laid it out because we want to get feedback on it, it's worked pretty well there, but it is a real challenge. You are absolutely right that you need continuity and expertise and. How people have continuity and expertise with people who work on this for a living.
Other comments or questions on this CAF committee idea?
No, I mean, for all intents and purposes, the subcommittee of the hack has tried to achieve that separation, but I do think there is value in having a separate. Group that's not intertwined with the group that has the folks that are likely going to be receiving the benefit, that are doing the policymaking and capacity beneficiary, so. I see the logic, I also just appreciate like, I think smaller committees, both in terms of what you proposed for hack and this can be much more effective at times.
Thank you.
So maybe I missed something there, but you said we already have a lot of governance structures and you typically would never recommend making a new governance structure. Why did you recommend making a new governance structure?
Because we think you have to separate the budgeting conversation from the policy side of this, we.
So what in other contexts, you know, what do you do? Do you just not have the policy committee?
Well. In other places, there's usually the hack or something like a hack is more informal. So I think the fact that it's been memorialized this way, I think, I think we see it two ways. Usually there's not a formal, something like a hack, you have a housing trust fund gets created and then you create a housing trust fund board. And then the problem is we have the housing trust fund board encroaching into policy issues that maybe they shouldn't be in, or maybe they should actually, you know. Some people have different views on that, but we see encroachment in the other direction. It's relatively unusual, I haven't encountered it, doesn't mean it doesn't exist, it's a big world. For it to go the other way. That's our thinking is here. We are certainly open to conversations about more elegant solutions and not creating additional bodies and I think the comment made that this is not that dissimilar to what's already. Happening, but just a little more formalized, hopefully turns out to be a positive thing. I, I'm trying to be clear that like, we think this is what we're recommending, I think it's a good recommendation, it doesn't feel as perfect and clean as we wanted to come up with. Just to be honest. The, the one other piece is that we thought in particular, and Sarah said this. A forum for city staff and the housing providers to be talking directly to each other on their recommendations before they get to elected officials. Because ultimately, decision all still rests with elected officials. Elected officials ultimately all still make all the calls, but a forum for that conversation to happen. Seemed really important because we heard concerns and frankly, some distrust on both sides. And you know, there's always going to be some tension between the administrator of a program and the person who actually operates it. That's somewhat healthy. But it seemed like there's room for improvement there and those relationships and this could be a form to help make that happen. That's our thinking very directly and more bluntly than I might normally say.
Thanks.
Great, I think we can go to the next slide. So the next recommendation is about empowering and increasing the capacity of city staff. This recommendation is really about staffing the city's housing staff. At a level that is equivalent or recognizes the scale of housing programming that's existing in Charlottesville. So making sure that there are enough staff who are adequately resourced to administer all of the different programs that we're talking about. We provide some information in the plan about. You know, the level of staff that Charlottesville has relative to its funding and you know, the level of staff that some other comparable cities have. We provide some other recommendations, some of which are outlined here. That would help to further increase staff capacity to be. Collaborators and supporters on affordable housing. That includes assigning a staff person to be a liaison for affordable housing development. I know the city already does this for, I think, for. Historic preservation, but making sure that there's somebody on city staff who can be the point person to kind of shepherd development through. We also talk a bit about, you know, again, including city staff on the CAF committee in order to encourage collaboration on funding priorities. And providing clear communication about staff roles and city processes. As well as opportunities and pathways for community feedback to the city. So a lot of different things there that are mostly around making sure that the city staff. Is adequately resourced to implement the various tools and recommendations of the plan. Any questions on that one? Okay, let's move on to the next slide then, because this is really part of that same recommendation, but we felt it was important enough that we wanted to give it its own. Its own recommendation. So as part of that work in increasing the capacity and support for the city staff. We've talked about establishing clear, transparent and competitive processes to award funds. So this relates both to city staff and to the CAF committee. But is really about establishing a transparent RFP process for funds and competitively scoring projects using a standard. Underwriting process and we've provided some examples of types of scoring criteria that could be used. It's really about making sure that public funds are used efficiently and effectively and targeted to key areas of need within the city.
Frankly, it puts you in a place to evaluate, did we, are we funding and supporting our goals of the comment made earlier, thirty percent AMI. We need to be primarily funding there. If that, you know, if we end up at forty percent without this kind of analysis and reporting, it's very hard to be sure of that. Again, I'm going to pick on DC because I live here and I did an audit of the Housing Production Trust Fund. And we ran the Housing Production Trust Fund for ten years without monitoring whether we were actually meeting our income targets. We would not actually meet our income targets. And so this process. Some of these processes, these are, it's process, it's less exciting than some of the other ones, but we think it's really important. If there's a long-term commitment to affordability to have these in place, both because they make the programs more effective and. Sustaining public trust and transparency and making sure this is an ongoing commitment and that the. Public understands what they're getting for their investment and that it is, it's much easier and clearer to communicate the public benefits that are being generated here. So it's, it's, annual reports are dull, but incredibly useful if they're well organized.
So what are we talking about? Are we talking about local funds? Are we talking local and federal funds like CV, DBG funds or? We, we're talking all funds or just?
Primarily talking about local funds, although that's a fair point that. If you're doing this report, you might as well pull those same numbers, information for federal funds. So we were thinking about local funds, but I think you made a good point that we should.
I would say one of the challenges we've had is that. When you think about how the city allocates all of its dollars to outside like sources, that there has been inconsistency in just the, the process by which we evaluate those things. So what are those criteria? So that could be what like what Jose was referencing, you know, within just the housing funding that might come either locally or non-locally, as well as just some of our nonprofit. Funding requests which comes from our vibrant communities funds. And so I've always really been interested as we've looked, going through this process is that we come out of this. And this is way beyond just housing, but you know, we have a measurements and solutions group that's working on basically putting. Targets in place, but I just think that we need to, we're giving, giving city dollars out, or sorry, we're allocating city funds. That we have some consistent criteria so that there is both transparency and fairness and. Across whichever kind of lever is being pulled for those funds to come from, whether it's the vibrant communities funds, CAF funds. Or some of these external funds that we are then allocating out.
And the other thing I didn't quite understand is what you meant by underwriting, scoring the underwriting, what do you, what do you mean by that? Scoring the underwriting? What does that, what does that mean?
Well, this really applies more to the development projects, but really. Are these financially feasible to what they propose to do? Are we sure? Two, you're underwriting for two sides. Sorry, my son wants to join us, our call. I know I keep talking. Sides here. One is to make sure the deal is financially viable and we actually aren't going to have to put more funding in the road or we know what, how much funding. The other is. Did they leverage all of the private money that's reasonable to leverage? And. Under, like, I remember going to school on this, like, I love going to business school classes because their underwriting was so much easier. All I had to do is figure out whether the deal would actually work. Public sector underwriting is much harder because you have to figure out whether a deal works and did I get the most of my public money? So I did not give too much. And it's, it's, underwriting for this is, it's challenging because. You, you want the deals to be safe and you know, if things go, there's a bump in the economy, they still work, but you don't, you want to stress the public dollar and get as many units as you can. And.
What the threshold is to know where, where the threshold is to do that.
You got to measure on both sides, which. Yeah, it's, it's interesting work, I enjoy doing it, but uh, it's not.
Hello, son.
I think the annual plan is a great idea because even the last development that we voted on, I asked a question doing that about whether. The previous units on Main Street that were supposed to be the affordable units that were approved for that development and. They didn't have, you know, people in them, which means that we voted on something and still while the market rate units are filled. The affordable units are not, and I think an annual plan would help us keep track. I've been asking since I've been here, where. Are all the affordable units and I still don't have a clear understanding of. I know what has been voted on, but I don't know what's been maintained or even ever, you know. Ever fielded with someone affordable to begin with, so there's no accountability even when we. Have been giving, you know, like SUPs and things like that to developers, that accountability piece isn't there.
Are there any other questions on, on governance at this point? I think we can move up one slide. Great, let's, let's go on to the next slide then.
So, so we've talked to you only about implementation. Side, we haven't actually talked about the tools, which is usually where we spend most of our conversation. We're going to get into land use to start with. We assume, I assume that given the composition of this group that there'll be an error, we spend a fair amount of time talking. Sarah, do you want to lead through these slides?
Yeah, sure. And I think to the question earlier, land use is particularly where there is opportunity. And a real direct connection between the housing plan and the CAF plan. And so what we've done is provide recommendations and guidance about ways to think about land use reform, which again is one of those major initiatives. The specifics of the how and where and how much will be. Decided through the, the CAF plan update and the zoning code rewrite and Jenny can talk about that a little bit more later. But when we talk about land use, we're talking about really using. Land use reform to increase access to opportunity or increase housing in areas that are served by transit or near employment centers. To redress or reduce racial segregation, in particular. Recognizing the historic role that land use and zoning have played in creating and sustaining racial segregation. It's about increasing the housing supply and limiting, hopefully limiting the increase. Of home prices that can result from limited supply. And supporting affordability without subsidy. That said. Without subsidy, you're really not going to decrease rent and or meet the needs of the, of extremely low income households. And there's also the potential to create unintended development pressures in areas susceptible to gentrification and displacement. So again. Throughout, we've made recommendations to try to curb that. We can go to the next slide. We have provided detail on each of these recommendations and we can go into them in more detail. But wanted to stop here just recognizing. The limited time and the composition of this group and ask if there are tools that this group in particular wants to spend more time on. Any areas where you have questions, concerns, comments?
I'd say just marquee issue, we've gotten some pushback about whether buy right makes sense or if it should all be affordable only. Can you help us understand what each tool is and why it makes sense?
Yeah, sure. Philip, I don't know, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, so when you say. Buy right, you really mean, the question, so I just make sure I got the question right, I think I understand it, but we'll repeat back, otherwise I'll answer something else.
Affordable restricted.
Yeah, multifamily buy right, the way we've written it is like really housing development period and you're saying why housing development period versus. Just the buy right should be for affordable only, is that what I heard you say?
Yes.
Gotcha, so. I think it's a yes and answer, yes, definitely for affordable housing. We do. And we try to lay this out in the front slide that Sarah just went through. We do believe supply is part of the conversation, we're talking about affordability. Fundamentally, if you're not building enough housing. Then you will have market pressure and that will make affordability worse. But a supply solution or a supply process has major limitations, which we tried to acknowledge on the previous slide. Building more housing can slow the increase in rent and there's actually plenty of evidence of that happening. But it's not going to create affordability. So we're making these recommendations because Charlottesville, at the highest level, like. Charlottesville is a nice place to live and I know a lot of people who want to live there and I don't expect that to change anytime soon and I don't think you all want that to change anytime soon. Because for that to change, it'd have to stop being a nice place to live. So how does that desire get accommodated? Because if it doesn't get accommodated, it gets accommodated by bidding up the price. So how does that desire get accommodated? Because if it doesn't get accommodated, it gets accommodated by bidding up the price to be in Charlottesville, which is what. Has been happening, not just in Charlottesville, but desirable and many rich neighborhoods all across our country. And part of that is allowing for an increase in the supply of housing. But there is a real tension and fortunately we have wonderful public bodies like yourself to help manage that tension um between. Building of housing to accommodate that growth and destroying character of a neighborhood and creating gentrification pressure. And so we. Our previous slide is, we are trying to be direct and sincere, the tension between those two things and recognize the limitation of supply. The other thing that may not come across as well as it should in this shortened condensed version is. Charlottesville has a really important role to play. This is the point more than any other where we think regionality and the urban ring. Are critical. Charlottesville is an important part of the housing market. But it is not big enough by itself to shift the housing market with supply choice on its own and. We, we say some of that, that's, that, that is clear in the report and if you read it, it's not as clear as it needs to be, we will. We believe it and we will say it more clearly. Um, we actually do. Another place, so Charlotte, we did it actually analysis, we've done analysis for Charlotte, Portland, Seattle, where they actually look at like, how much supply does it actually take to shift the curve? And it's not small numbers and it almost never shifts the curve down. It just means it levels it out. So it's a very long answer that hopefully is getting to the question you're asking. On the multifamily side. To this affordability piece. The mo- allowing more multifamily development, we think really has to pair with the inclusionary zoning. We don't think you can. It's hard, you can have an inclusionary zoning without allowing more multifamily development, but we think it'll be much less effective. Um, and so, you know, on the multifamily side, we're talking about. Where you allow multifamily, making it. Removing some of the barriers. So why don't we just pull up that slide, actually? Sorry, I'm trying to describe without pulling up the actual slide.
Sorry. Is that the right, is that the right one or do you want to go into the?
No, no, this is, this is the right slide. So like, these are the actions we're talking about. We're recognizing that. There's a infinite, there's significantly more nuance in the, what's going to actually happen and. Part of that, we're lucky that we get to punt to Code Studio and the. And the more deep process you're having here, but we're really talking about restructuring your existing multifamily zoning so that. Actual feasible development is by right where you've said multifamily can be allowed because right now, you know it. Generally, there's between the setback requirements and actual lot usage restrictions and other issues. You can't do it. You still have to come in and get permission. We started to talk about and look at the areas where, like, where are the commercial. Areas and maybe even some of the single family areas that are suitable to allow more. So. Both making it easier to do where it's supposed to be already promoted, permitted and identifying some different areas. But doing that in a way, and we started, we again, we've started to have some conversations with Code Studio on this and looking at this like. How do you do that and make sure it doesn't admit, it doesn't displace low income residents? So. Being very direct about that and drawing a map and saying, okay, this is an area that has lower price points and lower income. And we're not going to upzone that area because we think the market pressure will lead to demolition and redevelopment and displacement. And that's not what we're looking for. Um, but fundamentally, we're, we are recommending less discretion. Set some criteria on the front end. And less discretion on a project by process basis and. That is like. That is a hard change to make in practice to work well. But we, we, that is the recommendation we're making. And then this last point really gets to the point I hit earlier is like, you all, it has to be with the urban ring at least, and ideally we can get even bigger than that. Or, you know, or we may miss the point because there was a comment made earlier about has anybody actually looked at development parcels? Not in as thoroughly as we might in some work, but certainly enough to know that the urban ring is going to be a bigger driver of this than you all are. I think anybody with common sense who looks at this is aware of that, but we, we looked a little closer than common sense.
Phil, I got um two, yeah, I've got uh one thought and a question. Totally agree, totally agree that um. The urban ring is where we're going to be able to most effectively address this problem. Um, we cannot do it just inside Charlottesville, so collaboration is going to be very important. So. I'm hoping that you guys can beep up the um. Your chapter as relates to what's happened in the urban ring and what we can do to collaborate with the county just outside of the uh, outside of the city. So that does a fun. The question is uh relating to this feedback that we got from the hack. On your report. And it's the um, the objective to um buy rights soft density and they wanted to us to talk about. Buy right affordable soft density. What does buy right affordable soft density mean?
So. Comment then, potential answer. We received that, we read through it, we have not had the conversation with Hack, so this is my interpretation and I might be mistaken and we are. We, one, we appreciate the guys' written comments so quickly, um, because it lets us start to have more time for back and forth. Um, so I might be wrong, but what I believe it's about is really allowing some of that soft density, but only in places where it exchanges for affordability. So. There are uh examples where you, maybe you allow a triplex and you, you know, up to three for soft density. On a lot that only been one, but one of them has to be affordable. So it's kind of like an inclusionary zoning policy that would apply in your single family areas, thinking about those lines. I might be wrong again, I'm going to restate that. I might be wrong about what they intended to do. That generally, unless you have significant subsidy nested with the zoning. The economics on that usually don't work. Because the affordable units don't. Make enough money to pay for construction costs and even if you have two other market rate units. They're not enough to cross subsidize. You usually have to get to around. Well, I won't make a comment because I don't know for your market, but higher than four, you can get in a fourplex. So I don't think. That recommendation will work, but I might be misunderstanding what they're saying and want to have a conversation and maybe it's about nesting it with subsidy. Um, which could be, if we have enough money, it could be a great strategy. So hopefully I wasn't just muddling it more for you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, I, I think Bill will have a chance to, to chime in later and explain that to me because I'm confused. Okay, thanks.
Uh, I've got a question uh to follow up on that uh and on this slide. Um, so in a few places, you guys talked about uh identifying single family neighborhoods. Uh, that might be suitable for soft density or uh, you know, for denser multifamily. I, I just got to say, it's uh, it's not an accurate claim to say that any of our neighborhoods in the city are single family. Um, if you look at the built environment, um, and just the fact that in the vast majority of the city until nineteen ninety-one, you could build at least a duplex. Um, every neighborhood uh has some level of uh attached homes or duplexes and usually more. And so uh, you know, I, I wonder if the framing on soft entity in particular. Um, should be more about identifying neighborhoods where it's not suitable, uh, because we don't want to create development pressures. Um, to, to flip the framing there so that the default is that more would be allowed.
That makes a lot of sense. Okay.
I'd echo that, I guess. Two comments I had is I'm particularly, well, one, I think it's. I, I appreciate, I think it's a really important point that in the report that it begins this land use section with the acknowledgement that this will not. Produce, bring rents down, it may prevent rises, it won't bring them down. It won't meet need at. Perhaps even eighty percent of AMI and below, certainly not sixty, thirty percent and below, as well as that. Up zoning could potentially bring in or will bring in more outside investment. And really that very street by street, the impact on displacement that could have, I think those are just really important grounding realities. Uh, but two comments is just, I'm particularly interested with multifamily, like. What areas, both in the city and in the urban ring, as well as what specific changes can be made, made to try to. It seems to me one of our big problems is our zoning is incentivizing buy right office space and in some cases hotels. Which is having, one, not producing housing, two, having, I think, the biggest effect in terms of bringing, creating demand for people to. Live in the city that wouldn't otherwise be there. So what specific areas and specific changes can kind of flip that? So we're not just seeing all this buy right class A office space, um, that's popping up by right, meaning meanwhile, if anyone wants to do multifamily housing. They have to go through this long process and they're just going to say. Screw it, I'm just going to build this buy right office space. And second, um, it seems like inclusionary zoning is. Might square that circle of the conversation around affordable density in terms of. You know, when we're developing that policy, I think that will address. That concern as well as developing that policy will get us to the point where we're doing that market analysis of what's feasible in addition. Um, when are we going to need additional subsidy in order to bring down either the AMI levels or number of affordable units? And so. That may seem like the, in that inclusionary zoning, it seems like a particularly important piece for us to discuss if we're thinking about that.
So. Quick answers of, I don't know if those are questions I might spend, I'm going to comment on them anyway. Yes. I think the, the IZ, like allowing, connecting the IZ and the multifamily, we try to say that day, I think it's essential. I think it, you can't make that same connection on the single family. And so I think it's got to be framed in a different way. I think the framing that was recommended to us is a good way to change that conversation. Um, and the fact that you're incentivizing something because you've blocked or because multifamily is difficult, that you don't really want to be incentivizing. Is a great conversation to be having. We started with Code Studio, really looking at neighborhoods and areas and having some conversations about it. We're not getting in like the housing, the housing plan we're writing. Won't specify neighborhood, but the portion of the cop plan, and again, Jenny will correct me if I get this too wrong. We'll start to have those conversations. So yes, we're getting into it. Our piece of work doesn't get into as much, frankly, because. Code Studio is much smarter about this stuff than we are. But we are like, Code Studio has been all our conversations. We've been talking with them and we'll stay involved and around for any conversations they have so that. These things are not too disjointed conversations. We. Have worked really hard and RHIs had a really good job of keeping us, even when we want to go into our little corners and do our work separately, they're keeping us talking to each other. So we don't have, I don't have answers on locations yet, but we are talking about that and that will be. Part of the next part of the conversation. That's helpful.
I just want to do a quick time check. I'm not trying to stop the discussion. We've got about fifteen minutes left in our original ninety minute. Portion, I assume we're going to go a bit longer, but just wanted to pop in.
We'll move forward a little bit. I think the subsidy section is really important section in particular that we don't want to give it too short a shrift.
Yeah, we can, we can move ahead unless there are more questions on land use.
Let's keep rolling.
All right, uh, we can go to the next couple, skip ahead a couple slides, I think. Next one. Next one. There we go. Great. So we do provide recommendations on tenants' rights. Um, tenants' rights are really about helping existing tenants to increase their housing stability. Uh, and to find a better balance um between the power and rights of landlords and their tenants. Um, they won't create any new affordable units, but they do help households to stay in housing. Um, they also have really limited potential in Charlottesville due to restrictive state laws. Uh, next slide. That, yep, that said, we've, we've made some recommendations around ways that Charlottesville can meaningfully advance tenants' rights. Either through avenues that are currently available legally to the city. Or through advocacy at the state level. Um, the two key ones that are really available to the city currently. Um, are related to any time that the city is putting funds into a development or to a deal. Uh, or to a program. So developments receiving city assistance, we talked a little bit already about the uh scoring criteria. That the city should use to award funds, but I think as part of that, the city can um put in requirements for enhanced tenants' rights. Uh, anytime that it's providing funding for affordable housing development. Um, and right to council. So if the city is able to provide. Funding for, right, for um legal services for tenants facing eviction, it can then establish. Um, the city right, citywide right to council to help tenants facing eviction to stay in their homes. Any questions about tenants' rights generally or should we move on to subsidy? Great, let's go to the next slide then. So we've made a number of recommendations about public subsidy. Philip, I don't know if you want to talk about this. We've, we've got. Recommendations about rental affordability, homeownership and uh helping tenants to meet a gap of uh, make their rental payments.
Yeah, I, I think the purpose and limitations are pretty straightforward here. Like, you're creating direct housing, you're providing direct assistance. This is really the only way you're getting to. Those with the lowest levels of income. And I say lowest levels of income, households at thirty-five, forty thousand dollars a year in many cases, like households that. Certainly have significant income, just not, the, the housing market's not serving them. There are limitations to this and mainly the limitations on subsidy are related to the fact this is expensive and there's a limited public funding to pay for it. Um, and it takes careful design and program execution to design it, but. I think those are generally straightforward and I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about this, but happy to come back to it. Really want to focus, because I feel like we've talked about this a lot in the governance section. Want to talk about the tools here because there's a lot of tools here and we're not going to probably do them justice. If we don't spend a little more time. So can we go to the next slide? So we grouped the tools really based on the issue they're trying to address. So this is, these are the tools. Most directly related to rental affordability and either creating or preserving. Affordable housing. Now, land bank in truth could be used for homeownership as well, so it's got more flexibility. That's an imperfect grouping, so we, I just acknowledge that before someone else points it out, I'll point it out myself. Low income housing tax credit, you all are funding low income housing, this, you know, the city is funding low income housing tax credit, low income housing tax credit. Is how most affordable housing in America is produced. When I say most, I mean like ninety percent plus. So it's the biggest tool. Due development in Charlottesville, there's still a need for additional funding. Gap funding to actually help close a deal. That's not true everywhere, but it's true Charlottesville is a more expensive place to build. So this is about making sure that there's gap funding, so Charlottesville is going after and getting a regular pipeline of tax credit deals. Charlottesville, and again, I think this is a regional in the. You know, the urban ring county should be going after deals on an annual basis. This should be a regular pipeline of production here and that's. Possible the way the state is allocating funding currently. It, you know, had to be competitive. It's not easy to do, but it is possible to have a significantly higher level of production. Public housing redevelopment, we talked about some earlier, some of this earlier in the conversation. Redeveloping and modernizing the, the public housing in Charlottesville and making sure that it remains an asset available to current and future generations. Is essential. Public housing, while extremely expensive and at times, I'm sure frustrating for everyone. Is the best way to make sure there's housing that's affordable for households with extremely low incomes. Um, as expensive it is, it is less expensive than any of the alternatives and the alternative really is allow homelessness and squalor. And frankly, it's somewhat immoral. Um, there are certainly local governments that have pushed and tried to avoid public housing and. Try to use the public housing redevelopment process to get rid of their public housing in Charlottesville, thankfully has not decided to do that, decided to invest in it. This is about making sure there's enough funding to make sure. That, that public housing can be redeveloped. This is one of the hardest parts for us in the whole plan. Because the Housing Redevelopment Authority is still in process and thinking through what its strategy is. So we can't give exact numbers on the cost. We can only look at projects and efforts in other places and deals that are currently moving forward. And put forward a recommendation there. Yep, absolutely.
Your comment earlier in the meeting about uh making sure that the financing for. Um, housing is structured in a way where it um. Where it isn't potentially bankrupt and lost. Do you have examples of where that financing has been structured differently than ours is being structured?
So I don't know how yours is being structured, but I can't. And I don't have examples in the plan currently, but we can certainly give examples of housing. Public housing redevelopment that we think has been structured in a way that should protect the interest of the residents and affordable house, affordable housing in perpetuity. I mean, frankly, a lot of it comes down to who's. Again, I don't know all the systems, probably like who owns the land, who owns the building? Those are the two most fundamental questions. And then. If you just own the land but not the building. How is your ground lease structured? So like.
And that's been some other concern in um. The new development that's happening and that's why it's kind of struck a chord when you made the statement and that, and that's why I'm wondering.
So, so we will give you, we will provide some examples and I'm happy to talk about this more specifically. It shouldn't be such a buyer beware situation. It should be clear and there should be a clear safe harbor and frankly, that is not the way HUD has structured it. It's easy. I think a lot of these programs were designed with good intent by folks but trying to help save affordable housing and but they if you end up with a developer who's not a great partner or frankly, there's a good partner now, but not a good partner ten years from now or fifteen years from now, they think there's real risk. And yeah, it's something we struggle in other places. Preserve, but we will give some examples and happy to talk about it more. The preservation fund is one of the few tools we're recommending that's not currently in existence. And this is really about acquiring existing single family or multifamily housing and essentially taking it out of the market and that there's no, if you're buying, we give some examples of transactions on the multifamily side of this. If you were buying an apartment building, you'd go and get debt private, you know, a mortgage, you know, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, FHA mortgage for seventy, sixty, seventy percent of the property. And then if you're a nonprofit developer, maybe you'd put in some money, but if you're a for-profit developer, you're generally putting in equity and that equity has a really high return requirement. That's where most of the profit motive is actually going on because the debt payment is fixed. The preservation fund basically is just designed to replace that equity with public money that doesn't have that profit motive. So yes, rents might go up because that's what it takes to maintain the property. But rents are going up based on maintaining and sustaining the property, not on a profit motive. So the concept is to take the property out of the market. Preservation funds are becoming very popular and lots of places are trying them. They're the best thing you can do, we think, efficiency wise. If you can't do rent regulation and you're in the state of Virginia, so you won't be doing rent regulation. So it's definitely worth looking at. That said, you have lots of other programs are very effective and we will put this in as another tool, but not necessarily that it should jump in front of anything. The land bank, I won't talk about this in great detail. This is really more about having a legal, creating either a new legal entity or investing the legal authority in existing entity to hold land and assemble properties and not have to pay property taxes on them. This is something that Charlottesville has actually looked at carefully before and got derailed. Our understanding is got derailed based on concerns about frankly, in runs around the redevelopment authority, the Housing Redevelopment Authority.
You actually anticipated my question and it, the answer may be quick. Yeah, I think you may have answered it. But why would we use a land bank assets for rental properties when the land bank assets ought to be dedicated to allowing our low wealth community to, to, to get, to, to get in these land banks and begin generating wealth.
So I, I think the land bank can just be a legal entity to take the property and not pay taxes. I think you could use it. You have a lot of flexibility and that's why it's a little out of place here and I apologize for that. You don't have to use it just for rental. You could use this on a homeownership play where you're doing. If you do a simple property and then sell it, or you could do it on a homeownership play, we could even try. And Sunshine actually talked about this several times to us and he said there's, he, he pointed at a model in Richmond where they're really looking at doing a land trust approach this where the land trust owns the land and therefore doesn't have to pay the taxes. But there's still an opportunity for ownership and wealth building. This is really more about reaching agreement about who should have this legal authority and how it should be controlled. It's a legal authority that the state's given you and you, Charlottesville should use. We just need frankly, trust and agreement about where that authority is going to rest. Should go to the next slide.
But you're not talking about creating a new entity that is going to need funding from the city.
We are not recommending a new entity unless that for some reason we can't see that that's necessary. You don't need a new entity to have a legal authority to do this.
Right. So we don't want to be compete, we don't want to be creating new entities that are going to be additional organizations competing for a limited set of funds.
I don't think we say that as clearly as we should in the report, but that is certainly our intent and we will say that more clearly.
Sorry to, to, to cut you off, but I just want to triple underline the importance of the preservation fund. I know in your report it mentions there's six hundred forty-four low income housing tax credit properties in Charlottesville at risk of becoming market rate. Um, and I just think it's so important because if we're investing in interventions and six hundred forty-four units are going away and becoming market rate, we may just really be treading water. And I think that's really why going forward, structuring our low income housing tax credit investments with ninety-nine year lease, in some cases shared equity is so important so that we're not making substantial investment in a thirty years' time. It's all market rate again, and we've made, you know, very, very superficial impact. So just want to triple underline the importance of that as a policy for us.
Appreciate and strongly agree that, you know, building new is great, but if you don't preserve, you're not making progress. Homeownership, I want to spend time on this and this is the and we're just starting to get public comment back, but want to acknowledge this is the area we've gotten the most comments on and really like we've tried to lay out in our plan, how important we think homeownership is. And I think the feedback is telling us that we got to be even clearer on that. Because there's certainly a perception that the plan is underselling that. And so we're going to try to listen to that feedback and get more get clearer and tighter on this, making sure we're reflecting everything. But homeownership like in our analysis with the advisory committee, we laid out how homeownership has been a real challenge in Charlottesville, how homeownership rates have dropped for lower incomes and how homeownership rates have dropped particularly for black households and the importance of homeownership, why homeownership is so critical. If particularly, if you have a racial equity lens on things, but frankly, if you just have a economic equity lens on things, homeownership is, you know, is the number one asset for most families. It, you know, it is the driver for economic mobility. You don't have to like that. That's the model in our country, but that is the current asset building model. And so we do think it's immensely important. Um, and we lay out several programs in here that really, these are all existing programs and we're talking about making modifications and adjustments. We're talking about a down, down payment assistance program that we're increasing the level of funding and both the level of funding in terms of the number amount of money going into the program, we're recommending a higher level. And that the more, more funding go in per household. Frankly, one of the biggest obstacles for your down payment assistance programs right now is it's not enough. The market is so expensive that there's not enough money in the down payment assistance that lets households actually compete in Charlottesville. And so if you actually want this to be a meaningful program, there's got to be more funding and the ability to layer it with other funding sources. I won't get into that in too much, single family infill development. This is really about identifying opportunities for additional single family and making sure that they're affordable. It could be paired with your ADU and some of the zoning recommendations we made. Owner occupied rehabilitation. This is a program you already have. We're recommending additional funding for it so it can be ramped up and higher levels repair because actually somewhat to the similar point made about preservation is if you're trying to support low income homeownership. Great. We're going to create down payment assistance, we're going to create new homeowners, but owner occupied rehabilitation is about two things. One, making sure existing owners can stay in their place. And two, really making sure their homes are repaired and maintained over time so that when it comes time to sell it, they're able to get the equity and the value from that home. Because you can be in a neighborhood that's experiencing a lot of appreciation, but if your home, you can't access the financing, you can't maintain the home. You end up selling to a cash seller, which means you get much less value and there's much less wealth building for you. And so this is intended to address both of those. So to do that, we need more money and we need to be comfortable spending more money per house. And then the last is just an endorsement and recommendation to maintain and then your property tax relief program. It, it has a, it's, it has a real cost. And there may be need some for targeting revisions over time, but it also has a real benefit. Because it is reaching households that are at risk of facing displacement pressure that have real real constraint budget. When you look at the data on owners, their cost burden, you can really see that. I went through this quickly. I'm happy to talk more about the homeownership programs and I'm sure we're, I'm sure that'll be, this will be an area where we're going to make revisions and additions over time.
And the rehabilitation assistance, are there clear recommendations there or is this the extent of their recommendation?
There are clear recommendations and let's let's we can go, we can try to find it in the full report. But there are recommended actions and look, so we can we go down?
Report, so I'll get there, but I haven't finished the
That's, that's fair. We, it's, it's long and dense, but hopefully, so yes, and basically we talked about, so the record, just the recommendations are fundamentally about one, increasing the level of assistance. Two, making the assistance when you're doing a larger intervention, making it a no payment loan and not a grant. And this is and the idea there being that the money will recycle back so it can do more households and that by making a loan, you can say when that house does come up for sale, that another affordable homeowner gets the first bite at the apple. And the price is somewhat reduced from it. Does it require the homeowner to give up or do less to give up any value in the houses existing? It should actually leave them a better financial place. But we did move it, make a recommendation to make it less of a grant. And I, I'm sure we usually we make that kind of recommendation. We get feedback on it and, you know, there are legitimate public policy reasons to go both directions. We, we think it's important to recycle and make sure there's access for future homeowners, but there's a real balancing to that.
In brief, I would add with the property tax relief, I believe there are hard limits set by the state about both the amount of relief as well as the assessed value of a property that can qualify that are real limits on the program. So as that may be something we want to add to just cause eviction and rent control as an area for advocacy at for the general assembly to allow us to better target that program to reach a deeper need.
But not the, the house now you is the
So we were going to follow up and ask more questions about that, but I think we can add that it's like an anti-displacement property tax policy at the state level. It's something we can, because that really is the goal approach you guys are taking here. This is an anti-displacement conversation. Good. Next slide. The tenant-based voucher and emergency, so this is really the assistance for lowest income residents on a household basis. So really those at risk of, you know, eviction or homelessness. You have a tenant-based voucher program. We make a couple of recommendations about adjustments and really about increasing level funding. And in the emergency rental assistance, Charlottesville, like most of the country has been involved in standing up programs in response to COVID nineteen. We're recommending that you look at how to make these funds and this support an ongoing permanent effort. The country as a whole had an evic, you know, had an eviction crisis because of COVID nineteen, but households experience eviction crises all the time and their crises, while they're not the community's crises, aren't any less real or in any less in need of assistance. And you've actually stood up and created some of the infrastructure to actually run one of these programs. So it should be easier. Not easy, but easier to, to help make that a permit thing. I know I went through these quickly. But that's all of the subsidy side. And as Sarah said at the beginning, for each of these tools, we lay out a couple of different slides explaining the context, explaining the specific recommended actions and talking about how each tool lead links back to those three guiding principles, you know, regionality, racial equity and comprehensiveness. We think we've given a fair amount of detail, but look forward to, we know some of, both some of you on the panel and some of those who are, are listening as part of the general public work specifically on these tools and we look forward to very detailed conversations on some of those tools individually and acknowledge that we have not had that the full level of depth here. Next slide.
So as I said, as we said at the beginning, we're accepting public comments through December second. Based on those comments received, we're going to revise the plan and submit it for endorsement in early twenty twenty-one. Uh, and Jenny, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan update and how the Affordable Housing Plan will be incorporated into that.
Yeah, in general, um, we've outlined a bit on that virtual meeting page how we're envisioning that as well, but the, the vision statement that's in the Affordable Housing Plan has been used in the comprehensive plan vision statement for the housing chapter. It's a piece of that. But the housing chapter in the comprehensive plan goes beyond what's in the Affordable Housing Plan, uh, but it's an important piece of that. The sort of policy recommendations that are in the Affordable Housing Plan will be incorporated into the comprehensive plan as goals and strategies to reflect or to address that overall housing vision statement that's in the comprehensive plan. In addition, the sort of strategic actions that are outlined in the Affordable Housing Plan will be a piece of the implementation chapter of the comprehensive plan. So those major, major recommendations, major action steps from the Affordable Housing Plan will be placed directly into the comprehensive plan. The full document itself is not going to be the chapter, the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, but it will be an important document that will be explicitly a piece of the, the comprehensive plan. Um, and we, I will be going over our schedule really briefly once we wrap up the housing piece here so I can show you what that looks like on, on the schedule.
Yeah, I think that's all we have. So you can go ahead to the next slide if you want to keep going.
Great. Yeah, thank you. I can go one more. So just a reminder for everyone, if you go to this website, you can see the engagement summary from May and June, and that's important because what we heard then as well as we heard from planning commission meetings, from council, from our steering committee, all of that really fed into the Affordable Housing Plan and the comprehensive plan pieces that we have drafted so far. So please go to this website. We'd love to get your comments. For both those of you on the meeting as well as those of you listening, please send any written comments that you have. We will be following up with a, a planning commission and city council by email. You know, we'd love to have any other comments written from you as well. So I'd encourage everyone to, to check this out. Uh, if you go to the next slide, you can see sorry, I forgot this was in here. It's just a reminder of the, of many events we have going on, including the Affordable Housing webinar. Drafted Affordable Housing Plan webinar, which is tomorrow, the first one at six thirty and then there's one on the seventeenth as well. Uh, and those are in addition to the comprehensive plan webinars. Uh, you can find all this information on that virtual meeting page we showed on the previous slide. And if you go to the next slide. Uh, so this is our revised schedule, which is up on the website. If you want to take a closer look, we revise this in mid-October. Just to reflect, you know, we had delays earlier in the project due to a slow start with COVID kicking off our engagement. And then there was some other brief delays as well over the summer. So, uh, we want to make sure that was all shown on the schedule. Also shown on the schedule are a few important things. So we're showing here that the Affordable Housing Plan, as Sarah noted, will be revising that as we get to the end of the year and the plan right now is to take that to city council for endorsement in January. We'll be incorporating that then into the comprehensive plan or we'll start to incorporate it in, in pieces into the comprehensive plan. But in the meantime, in the comprehensive plan, we're also moving forward. Once we've gotten input on the vision statements for the different chapters, we're going to be moving forward to make those revisions and then also revise the goals and strategies that are in the plan to speak to those vision statements. Um, we're working again from the draft chapters that are available there. So we will be checking in. We have a check-in at the planning commission meeting on December eighth. And at that point, I'd like to speak with you all about a few things. Uh, one of them will be checking back in on the schedule, letting you know at a high level what we heard, what we think changes might be needed with what we're sharing now and what if we need to make any adjustments to the schedule, we'd want to check with you at that point. And then we also like to talk about the future land use map, you know, as we talked, as we mentioned, yeah. It'll be, uh, that's a really important piece of all of this and it feeds in the, the Affordable Housing Plan recommendations feed into that. And we want to talk about, you know, your process in the past, which we've already talked about with you quite a bit. But speaking with you about how we move forward from that and how we want to incorporate that into the, the future land use map. So that's something we'll be working on through all December, but we want to have that discussion with you before we really get our hands in there. So this is, it's an ambitious schedule. Uh, we're, I don't think we're, we're not trying to hide that. But we think it's, we think it's doable. It just depends a bit on what comes out in the next month or so in terms of potential revision, revisions or changes that might be needed to our current path forward. See, so if you go to the next slide, it's just a reminder with our contact information. You know, obviously anyone, please feel free to reach out to us about any of this. Uh, but that being said, Uh, but that being said, um, I know we we had a comment in the chat. I don't know if we want to address that or um um, I guess I will leave it up um to the the chair and and the mayor, I guess, to see if we want to then open it up for discussion, or if you want to wrap up any comments from.
I I think um, if we can keep it brief, I think uh brief, um. If you could briefly adjust Liz Russell's uh question, there would there would be a value.
Sure. Um, so I'll just read it and then um Philip and Sarah, I think it'd be good for you all to weigh on this too. Um, actually, Ms. Russell, do you want to read it? Uh, say say your question or do you want me to?
Yeah, yeah. And I should have said it when we were in the land use section and I just was thinking about it more and more. I just, um, you know, I I just keep coming back to the concern that the particularly the land use strategies, which are maybe the things I understand or can wrap my head around the best. Um, some of these strategies ADUs by right, multifamily and soft density. Um, that unless they are in unless there is an affordability requirement, they won't have especially given, you know, the desirability and, you know, hot market of Charlottesville, they won't have that affordability effect unless they're paired with the requirement. Um, and then that's sort of like, well, how would we make that criteria? Um, so that just seems complicated um and a challenge.
I think it is complicated and challenging. You're accurate that new construct, like new development, even accessory dwelling units will not be affordable because the rents, the both the rents don't support it and people are going to take undertake the highest revenue they can. Um, the infill program, we do talk about the ability to actually take subsidy and put it in accessory dwelling. So I think there is some direct affordability. A lot of the land use pieces, though, are going to be, with the exception of the inclusionary zoning on multifamily. The other land use pieces are primarily going to be about reducing the pressure on them in the market. And again, we we try to acknowledge, we think that's important, but we're trying to not overstate and make that sound like it's a magical solution because it's not. And the the data is really clear and the analysis is really clear. Look at how the markets that it can work and make a difference. But it's also really clear that you would for Charlottesville that you would you have to have development. Primary, most of that dorm is going to have to sit in the urban ring for it to get to a scale that's going to move the needle or keep the needle from moving up too quickly or accurate.
And I think as we discussed before, you know, a healthy multifamily development environment is going to be a necessary precondition to having that inclusionary zoning, which is the tool that will help to actually increase um, the production of affordable housing.
Ms. Dow.
So, um, and I apologize, I was having some technical issues today, but did, um, and if you touch this, then I apologize for reiterating or re-asking the question, but I was just wondering, um, did you guys see it feasible to come up with any recommendations to incentivize land? Um, I mean, property owners to rent or continue renting to our lower income residents? Like, is there any incentive or any type of program to keep the units affordable for the actual landlords, like private landlords who are providing this housing? Um, do you understand what I'm asking?
I absolutely do. Understand what you said. I mean, people, I think I do. Let me repeat back to make sure I'm correct before I get so too confident there. Basically, you have a fair number of private landlords that rent properties that are affordable. But there's market pressure and they have to make an economic choice about whether they raise the rents or sell the property in redevelopment. And what's the incentives? What's the what is what can we offer them to help encourage them to keep it affordable?
Absolutely.
So
Thank you.
I think uh it's a good question. And I think the most direct and honest answer is no, we didn't. We don't really have policies along those lines. The preservation fund is probably the closest, but isn't really set up for them to stay the owner. It's more set up for them to sell it to somebody else within knowing that it would stay affordable, but they'd get to sell it at a market rate. We so that's the short, direct, clear answer, longer, more convoluted answer. We could look at tax abatement policy and loan programs like that is something you could certainly do like it like you could. It's a yes, it could be done. You could we could adjust the preservation program to really be set up more as almost a refinancing or financing tool for existing owners, or we could look at tax abatement policies or even how the land bank might fit into that. Um, but we haven't yet. Just be direct.
Thank you. I think that would, um, I mean, if you have the time, I think that would be a um positive road to go down. Because like you said, especially with new development coming in, there goes the pressure with the taxes going up. Uh, why still keep this unit affordable when I can sell it, make money and be done with it? And then someone else comes and buys it and that unit or those units are no longer affordable. So I think if we are really trying to make sure we increase or maintain our housing stock, we have to not only be able to provide vouchers for private land for residents to use with private landlords, but we need to figure some type of way to incentivize these landlords to keep their rents affordable in the private sector.
So Ms. Chrissy and Mr. Rice, um, you know, forgive me for putting you guys on the spot, but I don't know how to do this. Should we open this up for comment or is this not a public comment kind of a meeting?
Well, you all you all spoke in the beginning at during the pre meeting that uh you you felt it would be good to hear from those who um, who have something to say based on this. Um, we talked about whether matters of the public are are at this point in time, and it seemed like this time would make more sense after fix and had the opportunity to listen to the presentation. Uh, you may put some parameters on on the timeframes, um, just to to keep things uh steady, but noting that uh we're in a public comment period for this and uh, they were the consultants are really hoping to get comments, whether written is wonderful because it's clear, um, but they'll take them in any way that folks are able to give them.
So Mr. Rice, would you um do things um see if anyone wants to speak and then remind the the public of the rules? Three minutes.
Absolutely. If anybody in attendance would like to speak uh on this matter, please raise your hand. We will call on you on in the order of hands raised. And if you are calling us, please press star nine. We have two attendees with hands raised chair. Uh, the first is Lakeisha Washington.
Ms. Washington, welcome.
Lakeisha, please unmute your mic.
Hello, commissioners and uh city council. Um, I'm here because I want to speak on the affordable home ownership opportunities for families in Charlottesville. Um, just listening to the presentation, it made me think of growing up in a single parent home and my mom having to work three jobs just to pay bills um for and take care of me and my brother. Um, and even with that, we never really um got to experience homeownership. And now that I'm a mom, that has been um a dream that I've always wanted for my daughter and myself. Um, but I refuse to work several jobs um just so that I can become a homeowner. And so with that, I thought of some of the feelings I remember experiencing when my mom had to work several jobs. And I know that for me, I just felt abandoned as a child because my mom had to sacrifice um being able to afford the cost of living in Charlottesville. Um, and that meant sacrificing her time spent with her children. And I feel like families should not have to make those kind of choices. And the only way that I am now able to even look at you know, becoming a homeowner is because I've collaborated with Habitat and I'm working towards owning my first home. Um, and so although I know that the Affordable Housing Plan has many great aspects, I'm concerned that it doesn't go far enough to support people like me with the dream of owning a home. I work at MACA, um, which is one of the organizations who sent the letter out today speaking to our hopes for a greater emphasis on home ownership opportunities, especially for people below fifty percent AMI. And I really hope that you all will consider this moving forward. And I just want to thank you all for taking the time to listen to me.
Thank you, Lakeisha. Thank you very much. Mr. Rice, anyone else?
Next up, we have Emily Dreyfus.
Emily, hey, long time no chat.
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners and members of council and Mayor Walker. Thank you so much um to the consultants for this really, really thorough and inspiring presentation. I was so glad to hear um, what you've what you've recommended and the process that you've been through, including hiring the peer outreach workers. That sounds like a wonderful step forward, especially given the circumstances we're all working in. And um, I just wanted to underscore a couple of thoughts about the um tax relief and rent relief program. Um, well, programs, because there are multiple ways that the city looks to provide tax relief and rent relief. Um, similar to what you said about homeownership, Mr. Cash, I think the those two programs really need to go deeper to provide more assistance to prevent displacement. Uh, I think um, one of the things you said was about the city becoming more comfortable, spending more money per household. And I really believe that that is where we need to go in order to actually make those tools as impactful as they can be. So thank you again. And um also congratulations to Ms. Washington for working toward homeownership and doing all she's doing for her family. Um, and thanks for hearing me out. Look forward to continuing to work on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Next up, we have Mr. Neil Williamson.
Neil, welcome. Three minutes.
Thank you, planning commissioners. Neil Williamson with the Free Enterprise Forum. I must say that having read the hundred and thirty three page document and then sitting through this presentation, I am very impressed by the consultant team you've brought together. Um, that being said, I hope that we will use empirical evidence to judge these various policies that are being propagated. Uh, we have grave concerns with uh what right now isn't a isn't legislatively enabled in Virginia of rent control, but we also have concerns about the overall emphasis on uh inclusionary zoning. Um, we're aware that some localities have had it and have had very limited success. We are very encouraged by the focus on increasing homeownership and increasing positive rental units. Both of these are admirable goals, and I'm hopeful that council as well as the planning commission can evaluate each of these various tools and see how they best address the objective set forward in the plan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Neil, very much. Mr. Rice.
If anybody else would like to address commission on this matter, please click the raise hand icon. I see no more hands, Chair Mitchell.
Right, consulting team, um, Jenny and Natalia, thank you for your leadership through this process, for your moderating. Um, good stuff tonight, I thought. Um, good feedback, good information. So thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I'm just saying, thanks for having us and for the good discussion.
So council, if you guys would bear with us for like another fifteen minutes, we'd like to chat with you about the um the garage across from um the Rex Center and um the in the um in City Hall Annex. So Mr. Stolzenberg is going to lead us to that conversation.
Yep, uh, thanks, Chair Mitchell, and uh thanks, council, um, for staying here uh late tonight. Uh, I definitely did not uh plan on addressing you as part of this, but um here we are. Uh, so uh just a little bit of background, since I know a couple of you guys uh weren't on council and some of this happened. Um, but a few years ago, uh, we bought the Guadalajara Unlucky Seven property uh for about two point eight five million. Um, and then about a year later, uh, we came to an agreement uh with the county uh to redevelop the courts. And part of that agreement uh was to use that Guadalajara Unlucky Seven parcel plus the next door surface parking lot uh and to buy the county share of that uh to build a structured parking um at least ninety spaces uh to give to the county to support uh the courts. Um, and so Kim Lee Horn did a concept study on what could go there. Uh, council directed staff uh to pursue a plan uh that used both parcels uh to build uh a parking structure uh of at least three stories uh and, you know, several hundred spaces with a little bit of retail on the bottom floor. And then staff added one more parameter, uh, which was that it be uh by right only. Um, so they wouldn't have to come ask us and you uh for a special use permit. Um, and so uh at this point, um, staff is uh well underway on putting together uh a request for quotations to find some teams uh that will be capable of building this. Um, and following finding uh those four to five teams, um, they'll put out a request for proposals uh which will be a a very broad, um, you know, ask uh to allow those teams uh to create a a creative uh proposal that satisfies the minimum requirements uh that I just mentioned. Um, and uh, you know, kind of do it however they like uh beyond that. Um, so my initial proposal uh that I was going to introduce tonight uh was, oh, and again, sorry, the we've talked a little bit before uh about uh why the initial uh plan was to just do a three story parking garage with nothing else. Uh, the big constraint is that it's a very wide lot, but a very thin lot. Um, and in downtown zoning uh above the third story, there's a very large step back required uh to the point that you basically can't put any more stories on it uh cost effectively. Um, and so my proposal uh is to change the zone or was to change the zone of the parcels to downtown extended, uh, which let you do everything you want to do on or you can do on a downtown parcel. Um, and just free staff's hands and the uh RFP proposal people's hands uh to do a more creative proposal um on that site. Um, so that would be uh just a simple rezoning. Um, and uh when I brought that uh to the Parking and Economic Development uh Department, um, they uh were very okay with it because um, it doesn't add any additional constraints to them. Um, like literally, they could do it the exact same way as they thought it would probably have to go down if if possible. And maybe they'll get, you know, a good proposal from uh RFP respondents um and and get something cooler. Um, so the way I was going to go about it was by initiating a zoning map amendment tonight. Um, but uh council has said uh that or legal council uh has said that uh, you know, there's maybe some issues given that uh it's not a broad map change. It's just a rezoning of a a few parcels. Um, and so the city as the owner uh is going to have to initiate uh that. Um, beyond that, um, there were some concerns about whether anything uh would change just on allowing more to happen there, given that a taller building might cost more money, even if it might uh either bring in revenue by renting out office space or by creating housing and other social ends. Um, that's a little bit beyond the scope of what I was thinking, uh, which was just a simple rezoning. Um, that would be done prior to uh, the RFP going out uh in three months and change. Um, and so uh there would be more options available to the respondents of that. Um, so uh, I'm not sure exactly uh what staff was uh hoping that I would ask of you. Um, maybe staff can chime in chime in here.
If I can, if I can just add a little bit. So what what um and and I I I think the the logic behind what Rory is recommending or thinking about is is solid. And it actually reflects the the vote that we took a year ago when we voted on the capital improvement program. We actually voted to to not fund the garage to the extent that staff wanted us wanted us to, um, because we didn't think we needed as much um parking space as um as had been budgeted. So we, I think we reduced the funding of that by by fifty percent. I can't remember. But we voted to um also reduce the parking, honor the parking that we committed to Elmore County because we we we've made a commitment there and we needed to do to do that. And we but we also voted to um include uh more mixed use and possibly include more housing in 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 the project. And so what we're attempting to do today, because I don't think there's anything, there's nothing to vote on. We we attempted to start a conversation with council regarding what we actually do with that property that allows us to one that allows us to, one, reduce the cost, increase more portable housing, make it a more mixed-use property, and possibly put us in the position of, because there'll likely be some commercial space there, raising our revenues. Rory, did I misinterpret you or?
Yeah, no, I think that's about spot on. It's, we've got a $5.5 million piece of land, we've got $10 million to build some stuff on it. We know we need to build a bunch of parking, both for the county and the city wants some more. And then, I think, the problem is, that's about all you can do under the current zone, and maybe there's a potential for more, because the land's already paid for, and all that space above it is free.
So, our only real intention today is to get this in your minds and tee it up for conversations. The problem, though, is that, Rory, the RFP will be issued in February to do this.
About three months, that's the hope for timeline, but it sounds like it might slip, we'll see.
And so, the parameters of the RFP need to be, we need to provide staff with a clear articulation for the parameters of the RFP in three months. And Ms. Robinson, Ms. Greasy, correct me if I'm leading us astray based on what we chatted about, please.
This is, this is Lisa. I, I was.
We lost you, Lisa.
Hopefully, you've got me now.
You're back.
Okay.
We got more Lisa.
Yeah, earlier I was just pointing out that, that for anybody who's listening, this is not just a simple RFP, this is a design-build-construction process. And we're not doing an RFP saying to people, we are giving them, as Rory noted, the minimum parameters. So, if we want there to be residential units within this garage, we have to say that. And the, the cost to the city upfront to build a building that would either include that at the outset or that would include a foundation that could be used to add that on at a later date. There's just, there's some, it's not as, I just want everybody to understand, it's not as simple as just a straightforward RFP saying, "Come build this for us, tell us what you think would be the best thing to do." But aside from that, they have correctly, you know, summarized what we talked about earlier this evening, to the extent that I think if there's going to be a rezoning, city council would need to do it as the owner of the property. I think that would also be the quickest way to move through a rezoning process. And I think that city councils should also sort of directly touch base with the Economic Development Director about timelines and that sort of thing. So, it's something that certainly can, can be considered. I certainly understand what's motivating it, and that is to give you the flexibility to expand the range of options on, on this difficult site. But I do think that we're, I know that staff is very close to developing a final draft of a design-build solicitation that can go out. And I also know that we're, we're butting up against some timelines and deadlines that relate to establishing the parking for the new general district court system. So, a lot of things have to come together pretty quickly.
Yeah. I just want to say, like, I don't want any, the public or any of you to think that these were not very similar approaches and questions that, at that time, every counselor challenged the staff on. And a lot of it came down to feasibility and budgeting. And so, I just want to just be clear, it's not like we didn't try to look at whatever way we could do this to get the most we could out of these spaces and this, this, this land. I just, even, I remember very clearly, even to build the foundation so that in the future, even if it could be built upon and there was other sources of revenue, was pretty cost prohibitive. The same time, like, I'm all about allowing for flexibility because things can change. I just, I really just felt, I wanted to just share that, like, we certainly have pressed upon this during many parts of this process and throughout with the same folks I think that you're engaging with.
Let me say, from my perspective, of course, I was not on council when the earlier decisions were made, but one of the first questions that I asked after having gotten elected was whether it was possible to look at that site with more in mind than simply parking, conscious of a couple of things. One is that 10 years from now, we're going to be thinking, boy, what a waste to just have parking on that spot. The second thing that I've thought is that when you're, excuse me, when you're in the shadow of a very large building already, that's not a bad place to build a taller building. It might be out of line just a couple of blocks away, but we're right, they'd be right next to already a very large building, and you could easily go three or four, you easily go probably five or six stories without confronting problems with the overall skyline. It would still be sort of a difficult problem, perhaps at street level, but, but it's not going to look grossly out of whack. Like I said, I think if there's a way we could do that, and I understand the differences in cost and the foundations and all the rest of that stuff, but if there's a way we could do it and illicit, meaningful proposals that would, as I said before, not cause us to 10 years from now say, darn, what a missed opportunity, I'd like to try to do it.
So, Jody, you look like you were like about to jump in.
Commenting about just.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, if you can, I want to give, he's been trying to get in for a while, Jody's trying to be.
Trying to get. Anyway, just to, I saw this about a half hour before our meeting started tonight. And what came immediately to my mind is that this is in a architecturally-designed-controlled district, and it's there for a reason, and I just want to make sure that we have the opportunity to evaluate it and evaluate what it means to go much higher in this controlled district and make sure we get the appropriate people and other boards who have, who have jurisdiction over things being built in this area, the opportunity to review it appropriately.
Kay, forgive me for interrupting you, please.
No, that's fine. The, like Heather said, you know, we were not all in these meetings together. But during my meeting, definitely asked, because housing has always been a big deal. I also asked about the two businesses that are being displaced because of the building and if there was a way to ensure that they could come into the new building if they wanted, you know, wanted to stay in that location. And, you know, so everything from, you know, retail, it's harder to create for restaurants than just retail structures. So, we did have, you know, these conversations, I didn't, I was not aware of this possible, you know, what's being presented tonight. And I, and I think that anything that we can explore that would, you know, make better use is definitely something worth exploring. Just being in the rooms, Heather definitely spent more time than I did with the county and just how frustrating that relationship with, you know, the board and the council at the time was going. That was primarily the driver in attempting to, you know, get something resolved. But if we can do this better, then I think we would all, you know, and the community would benefit from that.
Rory, what is your ask? And I'll ask you to make the ask, but then I'll ask Lisa and Missy to tell us what we can truly ask, because there are legal constraints that, that.
Yeah, so, to quickly respond to what Counselor Hill said, my understanding, when the feasibility of alternatives was explored back then, is that all of those concepts were still within this, this idea of staying within the existing downtown zone and not asking for a rezoning. With the possibility of, you know, us just kind of foisting a rezoning, not really considered. So, my primary ask and what I had intended to initiate as a commissioner tonight would be for council to initiate a rezoning to downtown extended, which simply adds more permission and doesn't remove it from the architectural review district. And then it sounds like there may be room for some discussions with the economic development department and the parking director of, you know, exactly what might be allowed or feasible or even just suggested in the design-build RFP in order to accomplish some of those goals once those constraints are lucid. Do those two seem like reasonable asks?
Ms. Greasy and Ms. Robertson.
Yeah. So, I, I think they are certainly reasonable things to consider. I think maybe there, that council will have at least some opportunity to look at this in the context of the, I think there's a workshop coming up on Thursday. But the, as I understand it, the primary issue for city council sort of at this point in time is going to be whether there is enough money to fund that flexibility, to build in that flexibility upfront. It's, it's, it's going to be a financial decision. And I have not talked to staff about whether it's possible.
Hey, Mayor, interrupt you just for a second. I'm sorry.
Sure.
The additional financial burden, I'm not, where is it coming from? Is that the capital expense to build that high, or is it like the expense to change your RFP? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's the expense that would be associated, certainly, even if you didn't add the residential units upfront, building a foundation that could support adding additional, additional floors to the building at a later date. My understanding is that.
One more time, we voted on this last year, our objective was to reduce the cost, just.
The commission, the commission provided a recommendation to city council.
To reduce the cost of the, yeah, our recommendation was to reduce the cost of the infrastructure to support the parking lot, so just keep that in mind as you guys deliberate. And again, I'll try not to interrupt you again.
Yep. It, it's reasonable to request city council to consider what you're asking for. Every, it sounds like there's a, a good consensus that people would like to see more done with this property. And I think you need to, you know, you make council aware of, you know, again, of your strong feelings, and it sounds like a number of counselors have similar feelings. The question is, is there a reasonable expectation within the city's budgetary constraints that even if you rezone the property, are you going to get what you're hoping for?
Yeah, I think that's a really good point. And I mean, I think, my thinking is that at the very end, you won't get anything worse. But as I recall it, when we were talking last December, the, the thing we had envisioned in order to reduce the cost and recommended in our memo was a public-private partnership whereby, you know, we make sure we get the parking and we hand over some of the parking to the county, we keep some parking, and we make sure it all gets done on time, and then whatever else happens on the site, you know, is really just a bonus to everybody. And so, you know, if there's an opportunity for a respondent to that design-build RFP to say, well, you know, I want to put two stories of offices on top, and we will either compensate the city for that, you know, give us a couple million dollars or just reduce the cost of building the parking garage. To me, that was the angle, to reduce the overall cost, save us a bunch of money, stick that into the cap if we can't directly get housing on the site. And so, my understanding of the current RFP process, or the RFP and how it's supposed to be designed, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it is open-ended enough that a proposal could come in with those, you know, kind of sweeteners, with the caveat that, under downtown zoning, it's effectively impossible because there's really no room for anything else.
I, I don't know the answer to that question. You're absolutely right, this site is a difficult site. I think typically what a design-build solicitation seeks is you, you tell them what you want, they tell you how they will build it. They tell you, you know, whether they're going to use concrete or steel or wood. They may make suggestions about adjusting floor plans or placement of uses within a building, but you are still telling the design builder what you want. You're giving up some authority over how that gets done. And so, it's, it's not, I just don't want the general public, I think all of you understand, but I don't want the general public thinking that this is a design competition where we just say to people, we invite people to tell us, what, what do you think is the best use of this site that would include X number of parking spaces? That's not, I just don't want people to think that's what this is.
So, could we be doing it, excuse me, as, as specifically, you know, the request for people to jump in to say, yes, I want to be a partner in a public-private partnership that has the following parameters? And one of the parameters is that we're, we're going to have an extra couple of stories there that we get to, we have to build them at our expense, but we get to do with them what we will. And, you know, in other words, put together a deal that, that gives them something and gives us something and may in fact hold the cost down. Obviously, we'd have to see what kind of proposals came in.
Right.
I think that it would be possible to do something like that.
That was actually what Rory was proposing a year.
That's what I thought, yeah.
Yeah, and, you know, there seems like there's a legal procedure for everything. There's, there's a separate legal procedure for public-private partnerships and how you receive and vet those proposals. I, I think it would be a really good idea for council to check in with Chris Engel and, and discuss these, these issues and to hear from Chris about, and, and the team of people that have been working on the design-build process, including, and just for, for Jody's information, that will certainly include going to the BAR at some point, just like any other developer would. But anyway, I think it's important to check in with Chris and to see whether any of these things are feasible and whether it could be structured in a way that doesn't keep the design-build process, doesn't delay that, but perhaps could be additive to it.
Okay, so that this keeps moving forward or dies. Ms. Greasy, Ms. Robertson, what do you recommend that we do next, please? Give us some guidance.
I would say someone should make a motion to formally request council to consider changing the zoning on this site to a category that would allow more flexibility.
Is this, is there more to it?
I have a procedural question, sorry. Another way to think about this could be to look at it as a boundary adjustment to extend the downtown extended zoning around to this site, so it's more of a coherent kind of gateway zone instead of just one weird off blob. And yes, staff, would that make more sense? Is there an advantage there? Am I thinking about this wrong?
Well, we may have more properties involved with that, and that would be additional owners. There, there are some, I mean, I'm, I am not involved in the process for this, so I don't have the back, the background, thank goodness Lisa did on this. But we also noted that it, it wouldn't be the straightest. Thank goodness Lisa did on this. Um, but we also, uh, noted that it, it wouldn't be the straightest forward zoning. There's an alley in there. Um, and so there would be some work to get through that. So it wouldn't be the, it wouldn't be a straightforward, quick, um, opportunity. Um, I mean, we could work through logistics, but it, it wouldn't, wouldn't be something that would be able to happen, uh, right away. We would have to work through the legality.
Do we have a motion yet? There's not a motion yet, right? Again, as I suggested earlier today, we should bake this a little bit more. And I, because if we bake it a little bit more, I, I think this is a great idea. We bake it a little bit more, we can make this happen. I would love, uh, Rory, just to have a chat with, uh, staff to figure out how, how we structure this and then how we, we then bring to the table a motion that's going to work and pass in, in time for it to be rolled into the, uh, into the, uh, proposal. We're, we're still, there's still some things that we need to work on.
I, I agree. Yeah. And I, I think I want to make it clear.
Sorry, so let me interrupt you because Vice Mayor McGill has a point she wants to make.
Oh, I just, um, I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. Again, relatively new to land use over the last year. Any rezoning change, we would then also be having to send out for public comment, correct? Just like anybody else for rezoning. Where like within 500 feet.
Oh, yes.
Property owners and make sure those 30 days at least, I mean, how long of a timeframe is the minimum that we would be looking at to get the rezoning done? If, I mean, if we followed through with it.
Well, we, we would have to, to work through any processes. So first of all, uh, you know, we just, Matt, Matt was looking at the aerial map, um, and, and found the alley. And then we started thinking through potential processes for how you deal with that and what happens to that property once it's zoned. So we would have to spend more time trying to figure out what the procedural steps would be. To, to understand the, um, what limitations there are in the property and what steps would have to happen to reach goal that we've been given, whatever that goal may be given. And so it's, uh, like Ms. Robertson said, it's not a, you know, one for one rezoning flip. We, we've got some more logistics that would have to come into play. Um, I, I also would not, uh, want to move forward with anything without any sort of direction from the staff who are working on this day-to-day uh, for multiple years, um, because I, I'm not familiar with the weeds and, and they probably have some insights that we would have to double do that they make and already provide.
There, there, there's great, I'm sorry.
I mean, that's just kind of why I was kind of wondering like this, even, even if it was the absolute cleanest process, the simplest that we were just doing, with absolutely no complications, no one objecting. I mean, what is the, I mean, kind of like, are we, and again, this is just so I can get my mind around where the minimum time usage is. Is that what, a minimum of three months, four months?
So the, the quickest path forward is for a city property, um, is for city council to initiate a change. That requires the planning commission to report back to the city council within 100 days. And within that time period, all of the, um, public engagement, the community meetings, whatever has to be done, has to be done in 100 days. But that's, that's more than three months. And so that, uh, in and of itself is going to impact the timeline that staff is currently working under. I'm not saying it can't be, you know, they'll have to tell city council whether, you know, or not there's, there's any leeway in their schedule. But my understanding is that the schedule is tight because it took so long to get from, you know, to get an agreement established to start with, and then to sort of get into the process of, of getting this thing, um, to the point where it can be, um, designed and constructed.
I know it will be important, um, for us to make sure that we reach out to the county and just make sure that they understand if we are contemplating this change. Um, just so they don't think that we are not going through. I know it's been clearly stated. Um, but there was so much tension last time that if we were going to explore something, um, like this, I would want to make sure that we talk to, um, you know, Mr. Blair and make sure he reaches out to, um, Jeff Richardson to have that conversation.
Right.
Agreed.
Yeah, I agree with that. Um, and I want to be really clear, uh, that my intention with this is definitely not to impact, uh, the 90 spaces that we're giving to the courts, uh, to, to the county for the courts or to impact the timeline at all. And, you know, we're, we're two years into this agreement being signed. We're still, uh, another three years away from the garage opening. Um, I, I feel like there's some still flexibility, uh, to make this happen, um, within the timeline. Um, and my understanding is that those hundred days, uh, that's the maximum amount of time before the planning commission needs to make a decision, right? And, uh, you know.
No, there's a new law that says if you want to reduce that time, you have to have a public hearing on whether you should reduce the time. So.
I, I'm very sorry, guys. I am sorry.
If, I would recommend that you all make a motion asking city council to consider a, a different zoning, uh, not necessarily specific to a particular zoning district, but make a motion to ask them to quickly explore whether there is a different zoning that could be applied, um, on this project.
I, I like your recommendation. Could you please walk us through the implications of such, such a recommendation? Like speed and, uh, viability?
If you made that motion tonight, city council can, can consult with Mr. Engel. They can, they can get updated information about timelines and costs and implications for the project. They can, um, um, work directly with, with me and Mr. Blair and we can work with both zoning staff and the project staff to see if, if there's, uh, if not downtown extended, if there's some other way to resolve the zoning issues that are providing the constraints.
I, I am very, I'm, I'm cool with it.
Yeah, um, that sounds great to me. Uh, and yeah, like I'm thinking that the zoning is a.
Rory, you got, you got the sale, dude. Make the motion.
I will make a motion, uh, for council to, uh, consider, um, an alternative zoning, uh, for this site. Um, in order to facilitate, uh, hopefully a process with staff, uh, of creating a, uh, more productive, uh, end product here.
Is there a second?
Can I ask a question?
Question, second, and there's, there's a second. So as we move to probably seconds, Ms. Russell.
I want to, I want to understand something that Jody said about, um, the AR, um, it being in an architectural control district and allowing opportunity for the, um, ARB to provide comments. So I'm, you know, I'm hearing about all of these different entities and is how, how are, uh, is there, um, you know, interest part of this?
Question. Mr. Lindro, are you still here?
I think that's a question really for Lisa. So as part of the, uh, evaluation by staff, they would be in touch with, uh, um, Mr. Warner and determine if there are any ADC issues, uh, that need to go to BAR.
So normally that's built into the project. And I know that on the project timeline currently, there is, once there actually is, um, a, a, a proposed plan ready to review, that, that BAR review is part of that timeline. They're not there yet because again, it's a design build process. So while they are talking in general about what's to be built, right now that is within the current zoning parameters. So the BAR gets to review it, but you know, there's not an issue of height, um, in excess of what's normal, such as there might be with a special use permit process.
And with the change in zoning and, uh, the allowed additional extra street wall height, um, how is that evaluated within an ADC?
Well, you're under, so if you change the underlying zoning, you, that doesn't change the overlay district. So the overlay applies to whatever the underlying zoning district is. You know, I suppose city council could also consider, um, you know, exempting itself from the regulations, all of them. Um, which would certainly make things a lot quicker and achieve maximum flexibility. It doesn't mean that the BAR couldn't be asked to weigh in on things that are important, but there are some other possibilities here that are available to the city because it's, it's sort of the, the sovereign entity that makes the rules as opposed to a, a private landowner. But those, you know, all these things have implications. So, um, if you want maximum flexibility, that's it. Um, but on the other hand, wrapping around another zoning district brings in private properties that adds a whole different dimension to a proposal. Just adding downtown extended zoning to this particular site is certainly an option. Um, and that would not change the, the BAR review. It would just change the underlying zoning. So there's basically three possibilities which can be evaluated within the parameters of the motion that, that Rory just made.
And, but it'll still be within the control district and whatever project comes forward will still be part of that district.
Unless city council determines that it would like to exempt itself.
Okay.
If, if city council wished to exempt itself from, uh, those regulations, recognizing that the city is a good faith partner in development, how long would that take? Would that be three months?
No, that could be done fairly quickly.
Interesting.
It, it would still, um, I need to, I need to look at that. That's not something we've ever, um, looked at in depth, but it's something that is legally a possibility.
Thank you.
So I am totally lost. What was the motion and who seconded? Did anyone second the motion?
Lyle seconded it. I made the motion, uh, to ask council to pursue an alternative, uh, zoning designation, uh, for this site in parallel with the process, working with city staff to, uh, plan a.
Got it. And Ms. Creasy and Ms. Ms. Robertson, we're, we're cool with that motion. That motion makes sense. It works legally.
It works legally. Yes. It gives council the flexibility to take a look at things, to speak with the staff, both in zoning and in the project staff and determine whether, what the possibilities are.
Ms. Creasy, is staff cool with that?
Staff will do what staff needs to do.
Ms. Creasy, would you poll the board?
Uh, Mr. Lahindro?
Aye.
Mr. Sola Yates?
Aye.
Ms. Dow?
Aye.
Mr. Heaton?
Aye.
Mr. Stolinsberg?
Aye.
Ms. Russell?
Aye.
And Mr. Mitchell?
Hi. So we will recommend that council take a look at this.
That's right.
Thank you, council. I really appreciate your time.
Um.
I meant to bring this up in April, so, uh, sorry.
Thank you. Are, are there other issues that we need to chat about? Are we, are we done for the night?
I think we're done for the evening.
Ms. Dow?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn to the second Tuesday in December.
Adios, bros. See you later.
Thank you.
Well done.